Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 2nd, starting at 9:00 a.m. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to do a roll call.
Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Do it again.
Here.
Commissioner Kemp? Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I have an illness in our family, so I'm not able to attend in person today, but I appreciate the accommodation by doing a hybrid meeting. First, we're going to actually do the invocation and the pledge that's given by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. I hope that you will open our minds and clear our minds so that we can analyze all the facts before us. As always, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders. Pray that you will keep them safe and guide them each and every day, and I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We have several very special events today, and the first is the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. This agenda item is a very special one for the Board of County Commissioners and the residents of Hillsborough County. It is our pleasure to present the 2022 Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. The board recognizes, the board established this award 17 years ago to recognize the exemplary athletic, academic, and community service achievements of high school baseball player or team in Hillsborough County. Those who win this award are wonderful examples of drive, determination, and leadership, not just in their sport, but throughout their daily lives. Today, Commissioner Hagan will present this award to our recipients from the multipurpose room in the lobby of the county center. Commissioner Hagan, would you like to tell us more about the award and recognize these outstanding student athletes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a presentation that I look forward to every year. I'm very proud to have been a part of establishing this award 17 years ago, and I say that not only as a county commissioner, but I say that as a former high school baseball player here at Chamberlain High School, so I know of the challenges that these student athletes face every year going to school and playing ball. And most importantly, this award could not be named after a better ballplayer in person than our good friend Wade Boggs. The namesake of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award is a National Baseball Hall of Fame member, 12-time All-Star, and a longtime local resident who graduated from Plant High School and has coached at Worthen High. Wade Boggs had an incredible 3,010 hits during his 18-year career in Major League Baseball. He played for Boston Red Sox, New York Yankees, and the then Tampa Bay Double Rays, where he finished his career. The Rays retired his number 12 in 2000, and six years ago, the Red Sox retired his number 26. We are proud to call him one of our own, and we are very blessed to have him here this morning. Thank you for being here, Wade, for all that you do for us in Hillsborough County. Say a few words. Sure, absolutely. Good morning. I'd like to start out by thanking the county commissioners for allowing us this time to present the award for excellence in Hillsborough County, not only on the field but off. I'd like to thank Commissioner Hagan for being our emcee. Congratulations to Kayden for the winning of the award, and TJ, and Wes, who unfortunately couldn't be with us today, as runners-up. It's one thing to excel on the field. It's another thing to excel in the class like they do. These young men are not only pillars of our society for their community service, but congratulations on the outstanding job that you do for all around in Hillsborough County. I'd like to thank the parents for the job they do of raising these fine young men. You've done an outstanding job, believe me. And to my board, it's a tough job trying to pick one guy out of Hillsborough County, which their resumes are tremendous. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Hagan, and let's get the party started. Well said, Wade. Without question, the sacrifices that the parents go through so these young men can play ball are tremendous, and a special thank you to the parents for everything they do, and the coaches, because I've always said some of life's greatest lessons are learned on the ball field, and so thank the coaches for what they do for these young men. I'd like to recognize and thank the members of the selection committee who reviewed the nominations and recommended this year's honorees. It's my understanding that many of them are here this morning, including K.R. Lombardia, Chair, Tampa City Councilman Charlie Miranda, Penny Parks, Tony Jackson, Anthony Tony Bell, Bruce Reese, Larry Lavaca, and Tony Saladino, who represents Mr. Boggs on the committee. Thank you all very much for being here. Every year, this award grows in prestige. For example, by now, everyone should know Pete Alonso, the 2013 winner, current New York Mets slugger, and I just heard on the radio coming here in May, I think he has 30 RBIs and eight or nine home runs, so he had a heck of a May this year. But more recent recipients are excelling on the collegial level, including here in Hillsborough County and in the Panhandle. In fact, the high school baseball programs in Hillsborough County are so talented, this year, the committee continued its tradition of selecting two honorable mention recipients. What's more, all three teams represented here today went to Florida High School Baseball Final Four in their schools' respective classifications. A truly incredible achievement. The following individuals, please come join me at the podium. J.T. Quinn and Coach Richie Warren from Berkeley Prep. As Wade mentioned, Wes Mendez and Coach Miguel Menendez from Jesuit High are unable to join us here this morning, but is anyone here to represent them? That's right. We'll start with Wes Mendez, a junior at Jesuit. Wes is a force in the outfield on the pitcher's mound and at the plate. This season, he hit .422 with four home runs, four triples, 21 runs batted in, and 24 runs scored. On the pitcher's mound, he was an incredible 10-1 with a 1.16 earned run average and a staggering 93 strikeouts in 60 innings. It gets better. In the Class 5A State Championship Game on May 21st in Fort Myers, Wes was dominant on the mound, striking at 11 in 6.2 innings, giving up just three hits, and the Tigers won 6-0 to win the title. Voted captain by his teammates and coaches this year, Wes is a great leader, teammate, and tireless worker who motivates everyone around him. He's performed more than 75 hours of community service and is very active in clubs and organizations that address his needs in the community. Wes plans to attend Vanderbilt to continue his academic and athletic careers. That alone demonstrates how good Wes is as a student and a player. Vanderbilt is one of our nation's greatest academic institutions and has a powerhouse baseball program. Due to his achievements, Wes is the 2022 Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award Honorable Mention winner. This state champion has a very bright future. And now, J.T. Quinn of Berkeley Prep. A senior, J.T. signed a national letter to attend and pitch for the University of Mississippi. A tremendous achievement. He's considered one of the top prep pitchers in the nation for the upcoming Major League Baseball Draft, a testament to his phenomenal talent. This season, J.T. was 9-2 with astonishing earned run average of 1.02 and 82 strikeouts in 68 innings. His outstanding season is one reason Berkeley advanced to the Class 3A Final Four in the state championship game, J.T. throwing a four-hit complete game shutout in the semifinals. The Buccaneers came up just a little short in the final, but had a great season. J.T. also excels in the classroom. He has a cumulative grade point average of 3.4, achieved the dean's list every semester of high school, and impressed teachers by being engaged in all subjects and helping his classmates. Further, J.T. is a great leader, mentor, and ambassador for the game of baseball. Throughout high school, he has participated in summer camp to teach younger kids about the sport and inspired younger players to work hard and learn the fundamentals. J.T., congratulations on being a 2022 Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award Honorable Mention winner. Outstanding job. Say a few words.
I just want to say thank you for, Mr. Boggs, for allowing me to be here, being congratulated for winning the award. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. About to have a hard word.
So there's something I can tell you something?
Just like to thank Wade and the committee for recognizing J.T. A lot of you guys that follow high school baseball know what kind of person J.T., what kind of player J.T. is by the numbers he put up, but I'm able to witness what kind of man he is off the field, and the accolades is one thing, but being someone that makes our community and our county a better place is fore and foremost what we coach for and why we get into education, and J.T.'s a testament to that. Our county and our city is a better place because of people like J.T. Quinn, so thank you for the recognition.
Now, Kayden McDonald and Coach Eric Luxus from Sickles High School, please come forward. I'm about to share with you, it sounds like something straight out of a video game or fantasy league, but I assure you, every bit of this is true. Only a junior at Sickles, Kayden McDonald spent this season setting school record after school record and helping lead his team to the Final Four in Class 6A. The pitcher at first baseman hit 600, which is incredible, and for the part of the season was over 700, which is unbelievable. He hit eight home runs and drove in 43 runs. On the pitcher's mound, he was an ace, finishing with a 9-2 record, 1.96 ERA, and 81 strikeouts in nearly 68 innings pitched. Kayden was selected MVP of the Saladino Tournament even though Sickles lost in the championship game, and he was nominated by 813 Preps in the Tampa Bay Times for Player of the Year, Player of the Week multiple times this season. In the classroom, Kayden is just as masterful. He has a perfect 4.0 unweighted GPA, weighted to 5.68. Kayden has touched numerous residents with his community service, which includes Sickles Baseball Holiday Food and Toy Donation Drive for Navy family, the team adopts every year, as well as volunteering with Flag Football. As baseball captain, Kayden set the tone for his team through his play. By character, hard work, and integrity, Kayden had one of the best seasons in Hillsborough County high school baseball history this year, an amazing accomplishment when you consider all the greats who played here and gone to the majors. He plans to attend the University of Central Florida to continue his education and play baseball. Because of his outstanding performance on the field, his academic excellence, and his tremendous leadership at school and in the community, Kayden McDonald of Sickles High School is a 2022 winner of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award, the 15th recipient of this honor. Congratulations. Wade, do I have to present the award?
Hello, everyone. I would like to begin by thanking God for all the blessings that I've been provided. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for taking the time to hold this award presentation. I'd like to thank the selection committee and Mr. Boggs for choosing me to receive this award. It has been an incredible honor to even be considered for this award and more so to win it, and it has also been an honor to share the field with great players such as Wes and J.T., and they have been very fun to watch play this season. I want to thank my parents and my grandparents for supporting me in everything I do, and I would not be in the position I am today without their unconditional love and support. I want to thank Coach Luxus for believing in me as soon as I stepped foot on the field in a Sickles uniform and teaching me how to be a better ballplayer and person. I'd also like to thank the rest of the Sickles coaching staff and my private coach, Tony Morrison. Lastly, I want to thank my teammates, and I would not be where I am today if I weren't surrounded by this great and talented group of guys.
I'd like to thank Wade, you and your committee in Hillsborough County for putting on this event. This is an extremely exciting time for these players, three guys that were up for selection or just three outstanding players and three great kids from the things that I've seen and the things that I've heard, and just want to congratulate Kayden on his award here today. He's represented our program with class and integrity. He's done it the right way. He's exemplified what it means to be a Griffin. He's been fantastic in the classroom. He's a great leader for us, and most importantly, he's a great person. The committee, I think you guys got it right. You guys picked a great person and somebody that you should be proud to win your award here for the Wade Boggs Award. So again, I just want to thank you guys and Kayden. Congratulations, and the other two gentlemen, congratulations as well.
Kayden, what a remarkable season. You're a remarkable person. Congratulations. We're extremely proud. Wade, was anything closing? Okay, you're good? Okay, well, we'll take a couple of pictures, but I want to thank the committee for their hard work. I know they had a very challenging and difficult task evaluating all the outstanding ballplayers we have here in Hillsborough County, and with that, we'll take a couple of photos, and I don't know if any board members want to make any additional comments.
Well, they're getting ready for pitchers. I'll just offer a great congratulations to all the recipients, and I really want to wish Kayden best wishes to you, and I'm sure it's going to be a great future. With that, I'd like to offer an opportunity for the other board members to say anything if they choose to do so. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Commissioner Hagan and Mr. Boggs, for helping us honor these outstanding student athletes, and I truly wish to applaud our three honorees. Each of them has contributed so much to their teams, to their schools, and to their community. More great accomplishments are sure to come as they grow their athletic and leadership skills during their college and beyond. Congratulations to all of you. This concludes the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award, and we're going to allow a few minutes for award winners to exit, and our special recognitions will begin as the recipients enter the multipurpose room for those proclamations. Today, we have three very special recognitions that also will be presented from downstairs in the multipurpose room, and the first is presented by Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very proud to present this next proclamation. I have been a proud Rough Rider for 25 years now, so it's a real honor for me to present this proclamation by declaring June 3rd through the 12th as Tampa Rough Riders Week. This morning, I'm joined today by the following individuals from the Rough Riders, and I'd ask them to please come forward. We have President Billy Hogan, Secretary Greg Eckley, past Presidents K.R. Lombardia and Bonnie Stoffer, a board member Max Garcia, board member and History Committee Chairman Kent Gallimore, club members Jim Hoy, David Ford, David Jones, and Joe Clark. Welcome, everyone. The First United States Volunteer Cavalry Regiment Rough Riders was formed to commemorate the memory and values of Theodore Teddy Roosevelt and his famous regiment known as the Rough Riders. Historically, the Rough Riders were an important part of America's and Tampa's contributions to the Spanish-American War in 1898. While I've admittedly never been the most active Rough Rider member, I must say that the Rough Riders are anything but your average crew. There are well over 100 crews here in Tampa and Hillsborough County, and certainly, we all like to be in the parade and to have fun, but in my humble opinion, the Rough Riders are the gold standard when it comes to being involved in local civic works, patriotic activities, public service, and fellowship events that enhance countless lives and raise money for charitable causes. Notably, two very special events and activities include the Rough Riders' involvement in Special Olympics and the countless teddy bear runs that go on every year, where Rough Riders deliver beads and teddy bears to sick children in hospitals. I've been on several of these through the years. I can tell you, there's nothing more moving than when you can put a smile on a young child's face that's sick and in the hospital, and it's just an extraordinary act of kindness and service that my crew provides to thousands of children throughout the year, and it's something that I'm very, very proud of. We'll read the proclamation now that states, "Whereas in 1898, Teddy Roosevelt organized the First United States Volunteer Cavalry Regiment, nicknamed Roosevelt's Rough Riders, to fight against the Spanish forces in the Spanish-American War, most famously winning the Battle of San Juan Hill. And whereas Tampa Rough Riders were formed in 1978 to create and perpetuate a living memorial to the life and values of former President Theodore Teddy Roosevelt and his Rough Riders. Whereas the nonprofit organization has contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars both financially and in volunteer hours to numerous organizations, including Metropolitan Ministries, American Cancer Society, and the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, to name a few. Whereas the Rough Riders participate in civic events in the Tampa Bay area, including the teddy bear roundup, collecting new stuffed animals and distributing them to children in need, in addition to supporting Special Olympic events and hosting Tampa's annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Whereas the regiment provides time and financial assistance to college scholarships, academic achievement awards, home restorations, and area improvements for those who are physically challenged. And whereas in June 2022, the Tampa Rough Riders Annual Festival will commemorate the first United States volunteer cavalry's place in history and the 124th anniversary of their stay in Tampa before deploying to Cuba. I therefore bear proclaim to the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, as hereby declare June 3rd through June 12th, 2022, as Tampa Rough Riders Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to commend the organization and its dedicated members for their tireless service and invaluable contributions to their community. Hillsborough County and the state of Florida execute the second day of June 2022. My congratulations, it's my privilege to present this proclamation to Billy Hogan, and please say a few words. Commissioner Hagan and others who are in attendance or are listening, want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for the opportunity today to come out and spend a few minutes with you and get this great proclamation that you all have done for us. Kent talked very eloquently about our mission with the teddy bears. It's one of the things that we're most known for in the Tampa Bay area and also our participation in the parade. But I'll tell you, there's a third aspect of what we do here in Tampa, and that's the history side of this. There were 560 Rough Riders who were left behind when Teddy Roosevelt went to Cuba in 1898. They spent a long summer here in Tampa. Of course, the soldiers who went forward and suffered greatly deserve our thanks, particularly this past Memorial Day weekend, we went and visited the graves of some of those soldiers in Washington, D.C. I want to make a quick comment about the annual festival that we're doing and what's called Rough Rider, what we're calling Rough Rider Week. There are three major things that we're doing that are open to the public and will help us commemorate Teddy Roosevelt and his Rough Riders. First is the Friday, the 10th, June 10th, at 2:45 at Gaslight Parks here in Tampa. There will be rededication of a marker that describes the fact that the Rough Riders were in that area. On June 3rd, our row is 124th anniversary of when the Rough Riders actually went straight down Kennedy Boulevard, crossed the river, and went over to the staging area over by what's currently the armory of the Brian Blaser Jewish Community Center. So that marker that's in place says, "The Rough Riders were born by here." We will rededicate that on Friday, June 10th, at 2:45 in the afternoon. That evening, June 10th, at our clubhouse at 5:00 p.m., clubhouse address is 601 North 19th Street. Our website is www.tamperroughriders.org. We will have a history event. It's a social between three crews, the Buffalo Soldiers, who fought alongside the Rough Riders in Cuba, as well as the Mombis. The crew of the Mombis represent the Cuban insurrectionists who fought against Spain prior to the Rough Riders, and Buffalo Soldiers showed up. So the three organizations are conducting a joint social. There'll be 10 separate stations with very short history discussions about what happened in the, before the war, the destruction of the main, preparation for war, and then the Battle of San Juan Hill, and then the after effects, the situation that happened with the soldiers who were ill and then those who eventually passed away. So that's the second, and then the third major event that I'd like to just call out very quickly is that we will have a yard sale and flea market in Cigar Palooza, is what we're calling it, at the, in our compound on Saturday, June 11th, at 11 to 5:00. And all those events are, in fact, open to public. So I'd also like to very briefly acknowledge, I know Kent already did, but our three past presidents who are in attendance, Martin Lopo. We also have Bonnie Stoffer and K.R. Lombardia, who's here as well. So I want to thank them for all the decades of service that they've done for the community serving as the Rough Riders. Thank you very much. Thanks, Billy. And I want to thank each member for coming down here this morning. It was an honor for me to present this proclamation, and we'll take a group photo.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for doing this, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for the service that you do in the community as you gather together for a photo. I just truly appreciate, as a former crew member of a different crew, I know how much the work of the crews do for our community, so thank you so much for being here today and for everything you do, and looking forward to the event coming up soon. Next, we will have a proclamation by Commissioner Myers, recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day and Gun Violence Awareness Month. Day and Gun Violence Awareness Month. And with that, as Commissioner Myers comes to the, the multipurpose room, we will get started when she's available. There she is. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
You know, as we think of gun violence and what our nation just experienced two weeks ago, we know that we have to do something to save lives here and throughout our nation. And so I'm not going to get on a soapbox of who should take responsibility, but we all know that our nation needs to do something, particularly when it comes to our future leaders and our students who are attending to various schools throughout the nation. And with that being said, I've already have everyone already joining me, but I'm going to call their names. Freddie Barton and Samethia Bagley of Hillsborough Safe and Sound, if you just come to the side. Johnny Johnson from Rise Up For Peace. Bishop Thomas Scott, Tampa Bay Coalition of Clergy. Pastor Clarence Nathan from Passers on Patrol. Grace Hutchison and Gail Power Coe from Moms Demand Action. Marvin Johnson, Major Marvin Johnson, on behalf of the Sheriff, on behalf of Sheriff Jack Conister. Julianne Hope, Hillsborough County Public Defender, and Gary Wiseman, on behalf of State Attorney Andrew Warren. Again, thank you for being here. Again, good morning. Thank you all for being here. This presentation is important because Hillsborough County and its partners are committed to ending gun violence in our community. Many of those partners are with us today, and they have done a remarkable job in raising awareness on how we all work together to advocate gun safety. I'm proud to present this proclamation in recognition of Gun Violence Awareness Month and Wear Orange Day. The proclamation reads, "Whereas senseless gun violence every day is claiming far too many lives in the community and in the nation. And whereas firearms are the second easiest cause of death for American children and teens, with 1,055 children hurt or killed by gun violence in the United States in 2021. And whereas every life tragically claimed by gun violence is one life too many. And whereas Hillsborough County recognizes that there is much to do to combat the mother tooth of issues that cause gun violence, but it would never short from its responsibility to combat it. And whereas Hillsborough County celebrates law enforcement for all that they do every day to help stop gun violence and to make county a safe place to live and raise a family. And whereas there are many local organizations such as Hillsborough County Children's Board, Moms Demand Action, Passers on Patrol, Rise Up For Peace, Safe and Sound Hillsborough, Tampa Bay Coalition of Clergy, and others who have dedicated themselves to saving lives by tackling the scourge of gun violence head-on. And whereas orange is the color that Heidi Pennington's friends wore in her honor when she was shot and killed in Chicago at the age of 15, just one week after performing at President Barack Obama's Second in Argo Parade in 2013. And after her death, they asked people to stand up, speak out, and wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare June 22 as Gun Violence Awareness Month and June 3rd, 2022, as Wear Orange Day in Hillsborough County, and urge everyone to support gun safety, to speak out if something is seen, and to sort out the differences in peaceful nonviolence means executed the second day of June 2022." I'm going to ask Freddie Barton, the Executive Director of Safe and Sound, to speak on behalf of this collaborative partnership. Freddie, come on up, find your way to the mic.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning to everyone, good morning to the Board of County Commissioners and all of the people who are here joining us. I bring you greetings, Safe and Sound Hillsborough and its Leadership Council. Our Chair is here. Honorable Julianne Hope, our Public Defender, representing also the State Attorney's Office, Mr. Gary Wiseman, the Sheriff's Office, and all of our local agency partners, but most importantly, the people that stand behind me as a community. While we're very thankful that we celebrate June as Gun Violence Awareness Month, it's very sad that we have to recognize it. It's very sad to know that from January to April of 2022, we have eclipsed all of the numbers regarding gun violence and shootings in all of 2021. It's very sad that we have to stand here and plead to the community once again to help us address this issue. I want to thank the Commissioner for bringing awareness to this and proclaiming that June stands as Gun Violence Awareness Month. It's also important to know that we have so much more work to do. What is being done? What's being done right now is a strategic plan to move us away from the census of gun violence, to treat it as the public health crisis that it is, by providing awareness and education from as little as three years of age all the way to our elder community, making sure that kids know that it's not okay to pick up a gun, letting adults know that it's not okay to leave firearms unsecured, letting our civic and political leaders know that it's not okay to take this issue on head-on first, letting our faith-based and our community leaders know that it's not okay to stay silent and stay within the confines of your walls. Thankfully, we have a consortium of faith-based leaders that are going out into the street to help us address this issue, making sure that we provide victims and their families a voice so that they can be heard, to share their pain so that others don't have that pain any longer, making sure that we have communication strategies to reach those who were impacted and those who will be impacted. Over the summer, we're going to be working with those youth and those members of the community that have made those mistakes and decided that it was okay to pick up a gun and work with them to understand that it's not okay and you can't take your life around, but only if you make the decision right now to not do this again. We're going to be working aggressively with our school district to identify those youth who may be prone to make these same mistakes and not just working with youth, but wraparound supports for those families. Because if we don't work with our young people as early as possible, we will see the propensity of violence to increase. We can't do this unless we have strong partnerships. Moms Demand Action, our Be Smart in Pain, working with Passers on Patrol, Tampa Coalition of version, Rise Up For Peace, and any other organization who truly decides that they give a damn about our community. What we don't have, what we don't have right now is enough commitment and participation and the level of participation we need from our community. Safe and Sound can't address this issue by themselves. Tampa Coalition of Clergy, Passers on Patrol, Rise Up For Peace, Tampa Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the School District, no agency can do this work alone. It's only when we come together can we truly see a reduction in gun violence. We have to find out where people are getting these guns from, address that issue head-on, but more importantly, get it into the minds and hearts of the individuals to let them know that there's another way, there is an alternative to picking up a gun in the first place. Bullets don't know names. Bullets don't know faces. But people know their hands, they know their actions. And we at Safe and Sound and our community partners who work hard to make sure that we address that there are alternatives to this issue. What we don't have is enough participation. Please come join us in our efforts. I want to thank the Commissioner again for all of her support. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and county staff for their support, for their funding, for their advocacy, and for their willingness to continue to help us in this effort. And may God help us in our endeavor. Thank you.
Very well said, Freddie. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to our Chair, Commissioner Overman.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Myers. I know you're going to do a photo.
Yes, we're going to do that. And Commissioner Smith would like to be recognized.
Okay.
And thank you. Yes. And thank you. I just wanted to say quickly, thank you to Commissioner Myers for bringing this important matter before the Board, and thank you to all the groups that are represented here today. This is the way. We cannot fight gun violence from the top down. It has to be from the bottom up. And as you so eloquently said, from all these community groups coming together. We have, we are blessed with great groups here. We just need to grow that. And thank you so much, Mr. Myers, for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. And I do see a couple of other Commissioners that'd like to say something while you gather for a photo. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And Mr. Barton, thank you for your, your words. They were very powerful. Commissioner Myers, you've, you have been a leader on this issue since you joined the Board. And unfortunately, your timing in presenting this proclamation today, your, your timing is, is excellent for very, very tragic reasons, because I think this has been one of the most difficult couple of weeks in this country as relates to gun violence that we've seen in over a decade. And, you know, we are all very frustrated as local governments, because not only are we not allowed to act on this issue in any way, and are we really totally preempted by the state, but we are even limited to the degree that we're allowed to talk about this. And there are, there are real restrictions on, on what we're even allowed to say. But I did want to ask the county attorney if it would be appropriate for this Board to send a letter to our United States Senators. And, and the reason I mention them is because there does seem to be a very serious bipartisan effort going on right now in the Senate to pass some legislation that addresses some broad issues that there seems to be a tremendous amount of national agreement on. And I think that while those negotiations are moving forward, it's very, very important, if we're allowed to, for local governments to at least express our support for those efforts. And, and if it would be appropriate to make a motion, to write such a letter, I, I want to ask you, and if so, make a motion for, for a letter to go out to, from our Chair.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And you are absolutely correct. The state of Florida wholly preempts this area of law in terms of firearms or ammunition. However, what you're suggesting of, of writing a letter in support of various state or federal initiatives would not be preempted and would be totally allowable. So we could be happy to assist with that.
So my understanding of this, the status of this is that there are bipartisan group of Senators who are meeting as we speak to craft legislation to address some of what, I, I don't want to make light of it, but what I would call some of the, the less controversial issues related to this. Things like whether or not someone should be able to buy an assault weapon at 18 or 21, addressing some of the background check issues. So what I'd like to do is make a motion that we send a letter to Senator Scott and Rubio, who would potentially be voting on this legislation, and that we simply express support for the bipartisan effort and that we reserve the right to, to follow up with a letter advocating for specific legislation when the legislation is, is clearer. But I, I think we should just be on record as wanting to support anything that moves the needle at all in this very, very difficult question.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Kemp, and I will heartily, can't wait to sign that letter. So with that, if Commissioner Myers, if you could get close to the vote, the microphone so we can hear your verbal vote. Clerk, unless there's other comments, Commissioner Kemp, did you want to speak to the motion or did you just want to speak in general?
Actually, I just wanted to speak to the presentation at the time.
And address the, the motion, and then I'll recognize you for the, for your comments. Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried six to, six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Okay, is Commissioner Hagan on his way back up to the boardroom or is he in the room?
He voted yes. Just his mic, microphone is point of order. His microphone is having issues.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate that. With that, Commissioner Kemp, recognized.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say, yes, it's, it's been a tragic and sickening week, and I just want to extend my thank yous and support for all the efforts that have been made in this community by each of these groups over the years, by Commissioner Myers for bringing it forward, to recognize this work being done. There's obviously going to continue to be a lot of work that needs to be done, but thank you to you all for all your efforts and work.
Thank you very much for those comments. I too want to thank Commissioner Myers for bringing this forward and Commissioner Cohen for your motion. It has been, as, as Commissioner Kemp mentioned, it's been a really tragic year so far. And the work that Mr. Barton does, I can't thank him enough for bringing the community groups together. And to his point, it is important that all communities work together to address these issues as it does impact families, businesses, and our neighborhoods in a very painful way. And coming together on creating solutions and, and helping people understand there's other choices is critically important. So thank you very, very much. Seeing no other comments, Commissioner Kemp, your hand's still up. Are you, did you have something else you would like to add?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Seeing that, we are ready for the next proclamation. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Smith to recognize LGBTQA Pride Month. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. The last, I've got the honor of the last recognition here, and I am very happy to be joined by a stellar group of several very strong, hardworking advocates for civil rights, human rights in our community for diversity and inclusion. And I'll have to ask them to join me at the podium. We've got Carrie West, President of Tampa Pride, Mark Eery, the Vice President, Howard Gator, the Treasurer, Mark Bia, Secretary John Desmond, and several other members of the Tampa Pride Organization, and from the Hillsborough County LGBTQ+ Caucus, we have Peter Horstman, Susan Lee, Mauricio Rosas, Ricky Bowman, Diane Bertolz Bowman, and Marina Welch. And from Glisson, we have Leanne Nestor Clum and Kevin. And from Equality, Florida, Nick Machuca. We also have leaders in the faith community. I'm so pleased that we are joined also by the Reverend Russell Myers from the Florida Council of Churches, Reverend Ed Kostelnik from Faith Family United Church of Christ, and from MCC Tampa Church, Kathy James, and the Reverend Jacob Hira Shaw, and Reverend Dr. Gabriel Morgan from St. Paul Lutheran Church. So good morning, everyone. Welcome. This is an exciting time for Hillsborough County. Every year, a proclamation is presented recognizing June as LGBTQA Pride Month, and it is a cause for celebration by all residents. Tampa Pride is a great organization. Its signature events are the Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade, which were held in March. And what tremendous fun they were. They're a great, family-friendly event for the entire community, where we all have a chance to stand together and, and celebrate our, our human rights and our diversity and inclusion in a joyous occasion. And Tampa Pride does an incredible job of raising awareness of the LGBTQ rights and equality. of the LGBTQ rights movement, demonstrating that Hillsborough County embraces all residents. It is a great privilege to present this proclamation. And I mean it's a privilege because the rights that we stand for here today and every day are very hard-won rights. And they are unfortunately constantly under attack. And we have to maintain vigilance constantly to protect these rights and to fight hate with love in our community. I'm very proud that Hillsborough County is a bastion of freedom in our state for all of us to enjoy. And whereas we stand for the rights for LGBTQ community, we stand for everyone's rights. And with that, I will read the proclamation that we will be presenting. And it says, "Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, asexual, and queer or questioning Pride Month is celebrated nationwide each year in the month of June. And whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the uprising that took place at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York, 53 years ago, on the morning of June 28, 1969, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBTQ rights movement. And whereas it is important during this month to reflect on the LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas it is fitting that several major United States Supreme Court decisions impacting LGBTQ rights in a positive way have been announced in June, including Lawrence versus Texas in 2003, U.S. versus Windsor in 2013, Obergefell versus Hodges in 2015, and Pavan versus Smith in 2017. And whereas despite this extraordinary progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas Hillsborough County stands with the LGBTQ community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all and to defend and advocate for LGBTQ rights as plain human rights. Whereas after the June 12, 2016, mass shootings at Pulse, an Orlando nightclub, communities throughout the nation came together to honor the victims of the tragedy, which includes 49 people who were killed and 53 others who were wounded, many from Hillsborough County. And whereas Hillsborough County and area cities are now partners with Tampa Pride. And whereas the 8th Annual Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade were held in Evore City on March 26, shining a bright national spotlight on Hillsborough County and bringing attention to all the hard work and volunteers who made these events happen. And whereas Hillsborough County greatly supports Orlando's bid to host World Pride 2026, a major conference in the year 2020, which also will coincide with the grand openings of the Pulse Memorial Museum in Orlando in honor of the victims of that violent act of hate. And whereas Hillsborough County will continue to be a county where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and recognize and respect those who are dedicated to providing a safe and inclusive community in Hillsborough County, executed this 2nd of June 2022. And before I say congratulations and invite Carrie to speak, I want to just announce that our county clerk, Cindy Stewart, is holding a pride wedding ceremony in Chalora Square today as part of our celebration of pride. And that is at 10 o'clock. So as soon as we wrap this up, people may want to join her there, our clerk Cindy Stewart. And at this time, would, Mr. West, would you like to join us here and say a few words?
I really want to thank you, Commissioner, because and all the commissioners for putting and giving us this beautiful proclamation. This proclamation means so much to all of us, every single one of us. It is touching. Because in Hillsborough County and in Florida, we say gay. We said gay 10 years ago, 5 years ago, 20 years ago. And we are the cause and meeting, and we are who we are. And really, one of the things out there, most touching out there is, yes, we are going to go and we are in support, our county, and also our community of having a pride, World Pride event in this state of Florida in 2026, the date and where we had a mass shooting and killing of our brothers and sisters in Orlando. And we are giving full support of the world in having World Members of Pride, Inter-Pride Conference of World Pride, come to this state and into this area to come and honor for the Pulse Memorial. And we greatly appreciate that. And we really appreciate, every single one of us are saying, thank you, Hillsborough County. Thank you for the community, because this state does say gay. Thank you very much.
I'll just invite Mr. Horstman, Peter Horstman. Oh, there you are.
I'm right here. I'm hard to see. So on behalf of the Hillsborough County LGBTQ+ Caucus, Glisten, Equality Florida, Rainbow Push Florida, the Florida Council of Churches, Faith Family UCC, MCC Tampa, St. Paul Lutheran Church, and all LGBTQ+ community members and supportive organizations, we thank and applaud the Hillsborough County Commission for making this Pride Month proclamation. At a time when the LGBTQ+ community is under fire and our very identity and existence are being threatened, it is vital to have the support of our local government officials. I would like to introduce Kevin, who is the president of the Hillsborough County High School GSA Association, to speak next.
Thank you for recognizing and celebrating the diversity that the LGBTQ+ community brings to Hillsborough County. As a member of the LGBTQ+ community, but especially as a teenager in our local schools, it is quite refreshing to have our local government celebrating our diversity and proudly flying the rainbow flag over our government buildings after the blatant censorship of discussions surrounding social orientation and gender identity in K-3 and whatever deemed not age-appropriate at the state level in our schools. This proclamation shows to other young people like myself that our government, that our local government supports our basic human rights and that we can be free to live as our authentic selves, even when our elected leaders in Tallahassee are actively working against us. This proclamation also increases visibility for LGBTQ+ people and the unique issues facing our community, which is helping to slowly shape the public perception in support of our cause. In my lifetime, I have seen such drastic changes for LGBTQ+ rights in Hillsborough County. We have gone from ignoring and refusing to protect LGBTQ+ people from discrimination to proudly affirming LGBTQ Pride Month. For example, in 2013, when I was eight years old, the county commission voted to remove its ban on even recognizing gay Pride Month. And in 2015, when I was 10 years old, same-sex marriage became the law of the land. And now I'm only 17. And now it's widely accepted for students like myself to be out, at my school at least. I mean, there are still many struggles. But, and that is due to our local leaders, like in the school board, like Karen Perez, fighting for us. And also seeing our county commissioners walking with us, marching in the pride parade in Evore City every year, which I would not have seen even a few years ago. So this rapid change gives me hope for the future. And I hope that the LGBTQ+ youth that come after me are able to enjoy a more accepting and inclusive Hillsborough County. Thank you for making Hillsborough County a more welcoming and safe place to live.
Well, that was very well said, Kevin. And thank you so much for joining us. Madam Chair, I don't know if there's anyone else that has anything they want to add before we adjourn for a picture.
I see, thank you all very, very much for being here today. It has been a delight to see the support of the board as well as our communities. I actually, all of you, I've run across on a regular basis in this effort. So I'm very pleased and honored to have an opportunity to celebrate Pride Month. And with that, I was curious if Reverend Russell had something he'd like to add before we take a moment to take a photographs from everyone, and then I'll recognize Commissioner Kemp.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. That's an unexpected honor and pleasure. I simply want to say this, God is love and love is law. And what God would have us do is enlarge our hearts so that we could love everyone as God has made them. And we're looking at a wave of violence in our land because people are deeply traumatized. And the only thing that cures this trauma is love. So we stand here within the power of love. We thank Commissioner Smith and the rest of you for recognizing that love is the true power of life and that we gather to say gay, to say trans, and to say welcome to one and all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. And I want to thank all of you for being here today. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you.
You can speak as they gather for a photo, and then we'll proceed.
And I just want to thank everyone again. As I stated, for the gun violence, your presence, and I think this is well-known in Hillsborough County, is so important. It was your voice that reversed that ban on gay pride that we had for more than a decade here. And I'll just say, Kevin, I was incredibly touched by your words. It really hit a soft spot in my heart. My daughter was president of the GSA at Blake, would have been like 15 years ago, not at the whole county like you are. And that was a really different time for her. She, that was when we were, still had our ban on gay pride. And I had been a commissioner's aide when that happened. And I was an aide to what was in Commissioner Kathy Castro, who was the only vote against that at the time. But you're right, things have evolved. And it's really important to hear from you how much it means, especially, I think, to a new generation out there to know that the commissioners are with you, not only at the time of the parade and publicly, but also all the time. So thank you for your words. And thank you all for your work and effort. I think it's together we can make this change.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kemp, for those words. Allow the group to get together for a group photo. And while that's occurring, we'll give Commissioner Smith some opportunity to return to the boardroom once that's completed. In the meantime, if we could, I could ask Ms. Wise to consider or present the changes to the agenda, and then we'll wait for Commissioner Smith to join us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one correction to the agenda. This is for item B4. This is to adopt a resolution declaring a county-owned property surplus. This is at the northwest corner of Kennan Street and Oak Preserve Boulevard. The correction is in the last sentence. Revenue from the anticipated sale of the property will be deposited to the B.O.C.C.'s Countywide General Fund as additional funding to be appropriated to the Parks and Recreation CIP program. We have one item removed from consent for separate vote by Commissioner White, who needs to abstain. This is 8/11. This is to approve the seventh modification to the agreement with Suncoast Community Health Centers, Inc. We have several items for time certain. The first one at 10:00 a.m., item E1, is a special appearance by Craig Richards, CEO of Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present their annual activity report. Item B1 at 10:15 is to approve issuance of a work order to HNTB Corporation to provide support for the transportation community engagement efforts. Item B2 at 10:30 is to receive and accept the Street Lighting Program Assessment Rate Study Report and to schedule a public hearing for July 20, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of adopting the annual rates and assessments. Item B3 at 10:30 is to schedule a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on July 20, 2022, to adopt the annual stormwater rate resolution, which establishes the stormwater management non-advalorm assessment rates and non-advalorm assessment role for calendar year 2022. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. I appreciate that.
Move the changes?
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Myers. Is Commissioner Smith up in the room yet? Can't see.
No, she's not.
Okay, well, we do have a motion to approve the changes as well as a second by Commissioner White and Commissioner Myers. If the clerk will do a roll call vote?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith? White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. We're moving to the public comment period, of which 45 minutes has been set aside. And the board recognizes and welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time that you address the board that comments are not directed personally towards a commissioner or staff member, but are actually directed towards the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. And the board has set aside 45 minutes in the morning, immediately following the changes to the agenda, for public comment. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comment at the end of the meeting if we exceed that 45-minute time period. Anyone wishing to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment forum found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open to the public. Sign up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. An option is available to notify whether or not the comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. Additionally, in-person speakers are able to sign up onsite via the kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online forum, an audio call-in number was provided to provide on the forum in order to, as, once the forum is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number on the online forum. This information is requested to facilitate the public comment process. Signups for both virtual and in-person speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comments are closed at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The chair will call the speakers in the order of which the requests to speak have been received, prioritization on a first-come, first-served basis. The board and the multipurpose room are designated for speakers only. Those who come to county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 35 in-person signups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Case coverings are strongly encouraged in the boardroom, although not required. TDC guidance- T D C guidance strongly recommends that unvaccinated people and those weakened immune systems continue to wear masks. The multi-purpose room will be available for residents who have signed up to speak after the first thirty-five persons have registered. Speakers will be asked, please exit the boardroom at the conclusion of public comment. And all virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. And with that, the first person that signed up to speak, who I have on record as being a person in, in person, is Mr. Sean Wilson. Mr. Wilson, you're recognized.
Being Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff, and, uh, residents of Hillsborough County. My name is Sean Wilson. I'm the president of Blue Sky Communities. We're at fifty-three hundred West Cypress Street. And I'm, uh, joined, uh, to my right here by Maggie Rogers of Catholic Charities. They are, uh, our joint venture partner on an upcoming affordable housing development that I will talk about in a moment. Uh, Blue Sky Communities is one of your, uh, most dedicated and accomplished, uh, affordable housing partners with five completed apartment complexes and one under construction, um, and a few upcoming. Uh, Blue Sky and Catholic Charities, uh, support, uh, B five, which is the allocation of twenty-four million dollars of ARPA funds for affordable housing. Uh, that's great. We're seeing a lot of that at a lot of different cities and counties. Um, I noticed in the staff write-up, it talks about renovation and, uh, acquisition and renovation. And I would like for the board to consider adding new construction to the, uh, possible uses for the ARPA funds. Um, and to illustrate the need for new affordable housing units, I'll tell you, uh, last week I attended a discussion about homelessness sponsored by the city of Tampa. And on the panel sat the executive director of T H H I. And she made a point of expressly stating that homelessness among elderly residents in Hillsborough County, uh, is projected to go up. And the only way to address that, the best way to address that is by the, through the creation of more units. So in that connection, let me tell you about Casa de Francesco. This is a proposed one hundred and forty unit affordable housing community for elderly people. Um, a couple of years ago, the bishop of the diocese, uh, challenged his, uh, churches and Catholic charities to find ways to develop more affordable housing. Uh, the Saint Francis folks and Catholic charities approached Blue Sky. We formed a partnership and this board actually has supported Casa de Francesco through a rezoning effort that we did last year and, uh, and through its a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar local government contribution. We leverage that contribution to, to compete and win a very competitive funding of Sadowski money at the state. Um, prior to submitting the application, we approached affordable housing staff and we told them that there was still going to be a funding gap because of the way the funding works, even if we win. Um, they, so they knew about that. We kept in close contact with them, uh, all this time. And, um, and we, the, the total development costs are thirty-two million dollars. We have twenty-seven million dollars committed already. Again, that's about five million of Sadowski money, eight million that we're borrowing. There's four percent tax credits. There's Hillsborough, uh, H F A, uh, taxes, got bonds in there. We are hoping to be able to apply for five million dollars of ARPA funds if it were available. We do believe that we're eligible based on what our attorney has, has, uh, told us about. Uh, we thank you for all the support that you've given to Blue Sky in the past and on behalf of Catholic Charities for all the support that you've provided to them in the past. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next speaker is, uh, Maggie Rogers, and I see you, you're right there.
I am, thank you.
On item B five.
I will defer, uh, additional commentance, but thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The next speaker is attending virtually, um, Sharon Calvert on B one. You're recognized.
Madam Chair, Sharon did not, uh, sign into the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker signed up to speak is Charlotte Greenberg, um, on B one.
Hello, this is Charlotte Greenberg. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I live in Lute. This charade being presented is an abuse of power. And the guise of education taxpayers' dollars will be used for deceptively worded advocacy for a sales tax increase in the midst of record inflation, ongoing pandemic, hungry babies, astronomical gas prices, and a miserable economy. The South Florida Sun Sentinel's Brittany Wallman said it well. Planning to vote against a proposed Broward sales tax increase? That's fine, but your tax dollars still may help convince others to vote yes. Don't expect to be told to vote yes, though. That part you'll have to read between the lines, end quote. Promising everyone everything is an old canard. Nothing is guaranteed but rail. All else are only promises that go like water through its sieve as developers have done for decades as they sold swamp land. Deceptive wording in spite of the law that forbid spending tax dollars to push taxes. This is what is going on here. Selling swamp, swamp lands so the rich can profit from the land sales along the rail lines and the development they intend to do as they take money from the poor. Taking money from people who are struggling to survive and using subterfuge to do it. This item is subterfuge under the guise of education. Using tax dollars to push a tax increase and under the guise of education. A tax that hits the poor and middle class the hardest. Again, still unfortunately, the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. It is truly despicable.
Next speaker is Dr. James Davison, also speaking on B one.
Good morning, board. It's a dark day in Hillsborough County when their local government is willing to spend seven hundred thousand dollars to not educate, but to indoctrinate. You can call this anything you want. This is because it, it only comes into effect if the sales tax went on the ballot and it ends after the sales tax referendum is over. Why weren't you educating the public for years? Why does this have to be now? This is just a subterfuge to skirt the Florida laws on using local tax dollars and electioneering. And you know it. And that's the way you've arranged it. I don't know what you call it, but we're calling it the Hillsborough County Commissioners Transportation Disinformation Board. You have no, no debate, nothing. It's just what your opinion is, and that's it. That is not informed consent. And I know it because I've been filling out informed consents for thirty years. This is outrageous. This is just a sales tax ploy. And you're all guilty. Anybody who votes for this today is guilty of breaking the law. And I've been assured by the legal that these consultants are under the same obligations for public record requests as the county, uh, government. And we intend to enforce that. And when you say that you are going to monitor organizations, the, monitor the activities of other organizations to be prepared for potential inquiries, who gives you the right to monitor anybody? What organizations are you going to monitor? No Tax for Tracks? Fix Our Roads First? The Republican Party? How dare you? This is a travesty. You should be spending this money on fixing our sidewalks so you don't have to pay two point five million dollars in liability fees because people fell on those broken sidewalks that you didn't fix before. This is outrageous. And I urge the board to vote against this. You, you are better than this. And the people deserve better. Thank you very much.
Um, I'm gonna make a reminder. Uh, in my comments prior to the public speaking, I indicated that, uh, that it is requested that you address the board that comments not be directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather at the issues. So just as a reminder, that's an important thing to remember when making your comments. The next speaker that's attending virtually is Vanessa Vasquez, uh, on, speaking on item B one. Ms. Vasquez, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. I believe you guys need the reminder, what you're doing is completely outrageous. The last speaker was completely correct that this is an overreach. Okay, when I was waiting just to, to be able to provide my opposition to item number B one, I had the opportunity to hear how the commissioners not only want to, um, out, to, 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 to extend this overreach to our state officials by advocating for the removal and the, and taking away the gun rights of law-abiding citizens, which that is not what we elected you to do. So that's completely out of your purview. Okay, stay in your lane. Literally, stay in your lane. Our lanes here in Hillsborough County need to be fixed. And that's what we elected you to do. Not to be taking away gun rights for people. Okay, that is not what we elected you to do. Now is what we want you to do is to spend the money that you have cor- right now. This seven hundred dollars that you want to allocate to your propaganda scheme of convincing people that they need to, it's a good idea to increase your taxes to pay us more money. Use that money to fix our roads. Use that money to fix our sidewalks. Seven hundred thousand dollars can go a long way for those specific things that you want to increase our taxes for. Why aren't you doing that? How is this not illegal? Using taxpayer money to convince people that they should increase their taxes? You are better than this. This is outrageous. I plead you to reconsider approving any kind of funding for this propaganda.
The next speaker is Chris Beard, is, uh, in person, I believe, also speaking on B one.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Chris Beard and I'm a precinct committee woman in Brandon. Today I want to speak regarding the seven hundred thousand dollars for transportation education. Hillsborough is a large county and includes many communities. We do not need to have a public relations firm educate us on those communities. We already know that we will not benefit from a transportation tax. I vote no to the agenda, item B one, taking seven hundred thousand dollars to fund a propaganda campaign to get people to vote in favor of increasing our taxes in November. Did you hear that? Increasing our taxes. Again, first of all, I believe it's very arrogant to raise our taxes in this economic environment while people are struggling with basic expenses. Thank you for your attention and I'd like eye contact, please. Thank you for your attention. Secondly, it's arrogant to think that the people can't see the misuse of funds in previous decisions regarding the budget and our roads. How, how do we have an extra seven hundred thousand? I don't have that kind of magic in my budget. Therefore, I vote no on item B one and suggest that the current tax money be spent where it was intended, on actually fixing the roads instead of spending it on public relations and mass transit for the city of Tampa. Most of the county will not benefit from mass transit and the cost to maintain is far above what's brought in taxes. Like I said, I live in Brandon where the sidewalks and roads need repairs. In my development, the city sent out people three years ago to mark uneven sidewalks with white tape. The white tape is still there and the sidewalks are not repaired three years later. I tripped and fell earlier this year. Last week trucks came to our neighborhood to repair roads. We were excited and a bit shocked. They brought about six big pieces of equipment in. However, only one side road was resurfaced and then they left. The main roads that needed it the most weren't even touched. All of that money to, spent to bring the equipment in and only one side road was resurfaced. To me, that's a waste of time and money and speaks to the efficiencies of the city. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ellen Snelling, and she's there in person.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ellen Snelling, I'm the board chair of the Hillsborough County Drug Alliance and I have a daughter in recovery. I'm here to speak on item G two, which is the report on Delta Eight sales. I want to thank Commissioner Stacy White for taking action after hearing my concerns about Delta Eight Skittles and Nerds. Brought them with me today. And, um, that I was able to purchase in a local convenience store. These items look exactly like the children's candy, almost exactly. And any child that would see it would want to eat it and could become very sick. I appreciate the board voting to investigate the labeling and marketing to ensure the state and local laws are being followed and determine if any additional regulations were needed. I want to thank Joe Gross, the Director of Code Enforcement, and Jeff Grant, Manager of Regulatory Compliance, for reaching out to me and for all their hard work investigating hemp regulations, conducting inspections, and producing a comprehensive report, complete with photos, and you all will be able to see it, um, of Delta Eight gushers, cinnamon toasted crunch, Fruit Loops, Nerds sheer pouches, and Pebbles, all laced with Delta Eight THC and could be purchased in convenience stores, gas stations, smoke shops. These brightly colored packages of sweet treats decorated with cartoon characters contain five hundred to six hundred milligrams of THC. A child seeing this pack on a kitchen counter could eat it and end up in the emergency room. According to the Florida Poison Center at Tampa General Hospital, the problem is only getting worse. Delta Eight exposures have surged in twenty twenty-two. There were a hundred and seventy-nine exposures in Florida in twenty twenty-one, and now we're headed towards approximately three hundred in twenty twenty-two. Delta Eight THC-laced candies and treats are clearly dangerous for children. Parents and grandparents must be warned. I hope that a, in the future, an ordinance will be proposed to help protect our children, such as suggested in the report for age twenty-one on edibles. And also I would suggest warning signs placed right by these items so that people will know what they're getting. I look forward to a much-needed campaign to educate retailers and consumers. And H C A D A is ready and willing to help any way we can. And, and also as a next step, I think we have to ask our governor and our legislators to fix the loophole in the hemp law, which caused this whole problem in the first place. Um, it is allowing these Delta Eight items to proliferate and make our children sick. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Joshua Lostel, speaking on B one. He is in person, I believe.
Good morning, everyone. I'm happy to be back here. Um, hopefully today I can challenge the commissioners to give that same mutual respect that Commissioner Overman has asked for and control their emotions and not attempt to use the fine sheriffs that we have as their personal security to throw me out again. Um, I'm here to talk about item B one and the inappropriate nature of attempting to use already struggling families' hard-earned tax dollars to convince them to tax themselves more for the county to do what it has already been doing, which is inappropriately handle that same money. Our working-class families are being priced out of their homes daily. Our senior citizens on fixed incomes that don't have an opportunity to subsidize any more wealth are being priced out of their twilight years onto our streets and into food lines. Specifically, our commissioners over the past two years have attempted to attack our small family and minority-owned businesses in Hillsborough County. They have attempted to institute nineteen-sixty-style segregation of our children in schools. And now I'm not surprised at all to find that they are attempting to attack our families' wealth. It's unacceptable and it's inappropriate. You must vote no on item B one and stop wasting our families', our hard-working-class citizens' families' money in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christian Paugh, who's in person, speaking on item A two.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Christian Paugh and I'm here today on behalf of Pete and Ron's Tree Service, Inc. To the right of me is Pete Fernandez and to the left of me is Ron White. Specifically, we're here to talk about item- Specifically, we're here to talk about item A23 on today's agenda, which relates to a contract pursuant to solicitation 224371. You know, this contract was, it's been a long and muddy process, and the path to this contract and the final resolution of it isn't exactly a clear path. The goal for Hillsborough County has always been to have a qualified tree contractor or contractors in place for three areas within the county. Pete and Ron's Tree Service actually has already been serving the county for the past three years under a contract issued in 2018. As some background, the company has been in operation for 48 years, and they've been servicing this county for just about under 10 years. In relation to the solicitation for what we're here for today, you know, as I mentioned, the process was long and muddy, so there was a solicitation which was issued, and we applied for it, you know, and we took a look at it, and we go, man, we're qualified. You know, we've got the most qualified people, we've done the most amount of work in this county, we've served the county for an extremely long time, and gosh darn it, we have the best safety record as well. So why weren't we considered for this contract? Well, we weren't considered for this contract based on a technicality which has been resolved and which was resolved at the time. You know, Pete and Ron's Tree Service, they're actually a minority-owned company, they're certified federally as a minority-owned company, and to disqualify Pete and Ron's Tree Service from this consideration because they're not, you know, at the time, they didn't utilize a subcontractor that was certified, which they are now, it makes no sense at all. You know, part of the issue against Pete and Ron was they failed to meet a goal, you know, but you know, you have to consider 2018 until now, you know, we ran into an issue which was COVID. It was extremely hard to meet the minority goals, but in spite of that, you know, they still performed the work on behalf of this county, keeping our roads safe. There are currently, there is currently over 400 work orders that are outstanding, and it really makes no sense, you know? So when you think about it, you want the most experience, which is what we have, you want a good safety record, which is what we have, you want the staff, and you want a company with the capability to perform the tree service, and most importantly, savings. Pete and Ron's will save the county, not an insignificant amount, but it'll save the county about $966,000, just a million dollars, that can go back into providing more services for the residents of this county. So in sum, you know, we would recommend and advise against the award pursuant to items A23 on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Paugh.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Ron White, who's also speaking in person on A2. Mr. White, you're recognized.
I'm going to go and give my three minutes to our attorney.
Yeah, I'm also on the agenda there. I'm Pete Fernandez. I'm President, co-owner of Pete and Ron's Tree Service. And as Christian indicated, we felt this was a very drawn-out process. It was bid one time originally in August, was the original RFP. Then, we submitted our bid with all the submittals. There was quite extensive in that bid. This was August of last year. September, it was due. We had quite a few qualifications. We had equipment, we had manpower, we had certifications for arborists, certifications for MOT. There was a lot of, you know, qualifications, which needs to be. This is a very serious contract, a very dangerous contract. We're working in very compromised trees. The city has, or county has thousands of these trees that are older. They're hazardous. As Mr. Paugh had said, there's over 400 trees or work orders sitting right now that should have been done. This contract should have been awarded in January. That was the end of our original contract. So in September, that contract was canceled after everybody put their bids in. A new contract came out in October, okay? We rebid it. This time, no qualifications were asked. Only thing was asked was about who our minority contractor was, who was Barron's Landscaping and had been working on the current contract with us and was certified by Hillsborough County. So we bid, we were apparently a bidder, okay? We're preparing because we know this is important, we've got to get this work done, and lo and behold, we're told that we're non-responsive. So we could have extended our current contract, but they decided not to extend it, which would have given service into this year. So now, come January 1, there's no contractor. The residents are not getting service, there's hazardous trees all over the place, we're coming into hurricane season, and, you know, we're still wanting to try to help in this work. We love y'all's consideration on maybe revisiting this contract and giving everybody an opportunity, a fair opportunity, to bid it and make sure we have a qualified company there. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker I have on the speaker list. Communications, has anyone else signed up on site prior to 9:00 AM?
Madam Chair, it's Commissioner White. On my end, it does show that my hand's raised.
I see that. I'm checking with Communications to make sure we have no other public speakers there. If we are good to go, the last speaker I had from the notice I received just before the meeting was Mr. Fernandez. Are there any other speakers available to speak during public comment?
There are no other speakers.
Madam Chair, we do not have anybody else signed up virtually.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm concerned that we have a procurement item here on the consent agenda and that a bidder has shown up to express concerns, perhaps dispute some facts. Probably, in hearing them speak, there's probably a little more than what we can get into today on the fly. I'm wondering if it's possible to maybe have this item deferred and have it come back on a regular, on the regular agenda versus the consent agenda so that we can receive a staff presentation and have a better opportunity to dig into exactly what the issues are here.
Commissioner White, are you asking for that to be removed and addressed today or deferred to a future date?
I'm asking if it can be deferred to a future meeting and to be placed on the regular agenda so that we can have a staff presentation.
We have Scott Stromer on the line. I think if it's the board's pleasure, I believe there's not a problem to do that.
I think I'd like to learn a little more information and have a chance to hear a staff presentation, and I guess at that point, bidders would be free to show up just like they did today and perhaps speak to the issue during public comment. So I'll make a motion to defer this to the next regular county commission meeting and have it placed on the regular agenda.
We have a motion back to Mr. White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, back to Commissioner Smith. With that...
Point of order, because we have, point of order, just, I'd like to ask a question. Because we are no longer allowed to pull any items from consent without 24 hours' notice, which I've always objected to, by the way, because I feel it's, just like situations like this, but do we need then to pull this item and then have a supermajority vote? Is that the procedure for this?
So Commissioner, I think this item is distinguishable because you've always reserved the right to make changes after hearing from the public. It's not just a Commissioner on their own doing it before hearing from the public. So I think in this case, the board is free to defer it if they like.
And if I could just add one other thing, I think the request is to come back at the next meeting. I think what's some of the concern is if we're asked to present something at the existing meeting. So given the notice, we could accommodate at the next meeting, makes it a little bit easier for staff. I think that's the issue.
Thank you for those comments and the question. Commissioner Kemp, did you get your answer?
Yes, I've got my answer, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we have a motion to remove item A2 from the consent agenda for deferring it to...
It's A23.
I'm sorry, A23? Oh, okay, sorry about that. A23 to be deferred to the June 15 meeting, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that was the intent of my motion.
Excellent, thank you. And hearing, seeing no further comments, please, Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote on that motion?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we also need to address the item that was removed for separate vote, item A11.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had that removed just for the purposes of abstaining. I practice pharmacy part-time at Suncoast Community Health Centers. I always state for the record that I'm not a decision-maker with the organization, but nevertheless, to avoid any potential conflict of interest, I always abstain on those items, and I have submitted the proper paperwork to the Clerk's office.
Excellent. So for the item...
Move A11?
Move A11 by Commissioner Cohen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. With that, please, Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Abstain.
Motion carried, six to zero. Commissioner White abstained.
Excellent, thank you. And for, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands and amended?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp? Second by Commissioner Cohen? Clerk, seeing no other comments? Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our first item is our item E1. This is a special appearance by Craig Richards, CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, and he's going to present their annual activity report.
Mr. Richards, welcome. Richard, welcome. I've been looking forward to this report to celebrate all the wonderful things that are happening in our Tampa Bay region. Thank you very much for being present today.
Well, thank you for having me, Madam Chair, and good morning to you and all the Commissioners on the Court and everyone in attendance. Thank you for having me. If I can, I'm going to try to share my screen with you so that I can share with the Commissioners' Court our results for the past two quarters. And let me know if this comes in here.
All right, it's coming in, but you need to, there you go.
How's that?
You got, we got it, thank you.
All right, we're in business now. So again, thank you for having me. This report is for, is our biannual update for quarters one and two of this fiscal year. And I am really pleased to report that in partnership with your county economic development staff, we've had seven business relocation and expansion announcements so far this year, some pretty interesting companies as well. So for example, Avenade is a, is an engineering hub that's in a joint partnership between Accenture and Microsoft, and they're hiring 500 software engineers right here in the Tampa Bay area. We're really pleased about that. HSP is a IT headquarters, and they're employing 300 people. So we have a number of IT companies as well as professional services and financial services companies that have announced so far this year. Which brings us to about 1,048 new jobs so far this year. That's about 46 and a half percent of our goal of 2,250. However, it's on, we only have about 2.5 million of our annual capital investment goal of 100 million. That's, that's only about 2.5% of our goal, and a large part of that is because many of these IT companies don't have large capital investment requirements, and we're seeing that some of them are taking advantage of coworking space, like Industrious and WeWorks. In this environment where there's remote workers and people haven't fully gone back to the office yet, there's still quite a bit of uncertainty as to what the space requirements are going to be for employees. And so we're seeing a lag in capital investment. However, I'll show you in some upcoming slides that we do have a strong pipeline, and we do anticipate a couple of our projects, if they announce, should get us at the $100 million capital investment goal. I'm also pleased to report that we are well underway of meeting our goal for nongovernment funding. We have about $1.3 million in private sector funding of our $1,750,000 annual goal, and so that's well underway. We fully anticipate making that goal this year as well. As I mentioned before, these two graphs illustrate our pipeline activity. The one on the left with the bar chart, you'll see recruitment and retention and expansion projects compared to previous years. So the blue bar are the number of projects that's in our pipeline as of today. And you'll see, we have a total of 177, which puts us on par to back in pre-pandemic times of Q1 of 20 and 2019. What I really want to bring your attention to is the upper part of those bars. You'll notice that we have 153 recruitment projects in our pipeline compared to in the past, you know, this is an all-time high for us. So what this means is we, our pipeline is robust with recruitment types of leads. Doesn't mean that we're not focusing more on retention and expansion. I'll give you, we'll talk more about that later, but we have about 24 retention and expansion projects in our pipeline as well. The makeup of those leads in our, from our target industries, you'll see that 42% of those new leads are manufacturing leads. So about 75 projects are manufacturing-related. And then the next, the next one, of course, is information technology, which is about 22% of our leads. Now, what's interesting to note, if you look at all of those leads together, we have about 31% of those leads, and these are in various targeted industry sectors, are corporate headquarters, and that has been a focus of the EDC for a number of years now, and we're starting to see some really good, healthy traction on that. These two charts are basically where the new leads, the new leads by industries and new leads by source. As I mentioned before, manufacturing and information technology are the top two new leads. The number of leads by source has been changing. You'll notice that while EFI, Enterprise Florida, we, 27 of our leads originated from there, but that, that number has steadily gone down in terms of the percentage of our total leads. You'll notice that the vast, you know, between direct leads directly to us and the other sources, we now outnumber the types of leads that we're getting from Enterprise Florida. And there's a number of reasons for that. We've been very aggressive in our marketing efforts, primarily our social media efforts to gather leads, and that's starting to pay off for us. And it also shows that Enterprise Florida is, because of the lack of incentives on the state level, companies are coming directly to us instead of going directly to Enterprise Florida. So that's something that we need to continue to monitor, but it also spells good success for us in our marketing efforts as well. So I've talked a little bit about business retention and expansion. This year, we've done something a little new. We actually branded our BRE campaign to be named Expand Tampa Bay. Expand Tampa Bay. And what this basically includes is a new survey tool that we're using. It's an online survey, and the purpose of that is to gather this information virtually and then aggregate it and then share it with policymakers like yourself so that you can be informed about what are some of the things that the, some, some of the issues that businesses are saying within our, within our county. As I mentioned, it's a new branding and marketing effort. And, you know, what this has helped, helped, helps us do is really uncover some of the expansion projects that are out there. It, it helps us reach more people. It allows us to aggregate the data. And then ultimately, it also serves as a recruitment tool. Many of the companies that are located here in the Tampa Bay area and in Hillsborough County, they're working with vendors and contractors and suppliers, and oftentimes, we can use this information to help recruit them to the area. And so far this year, we've had 79 companies that participated, which represents about 20,700 employees. Of the 79 companies, 44 companies say that they plan to expand this year, which is outstanding. And, and that's estimated to create nearly 4,000 new jobs and $124 million in capital investment. Also this year, we commissioned a study. It's actually a location advisor's assessment by Hickey Global. And Hickey Global is a site selection firm. And what we asked them to do was essentially look at our MSA, which includes Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Pasco, and determine what our competitiveness is compared to other metro areas within our, our targeted industries. Now, this differs from the Tampa Bay Partnership's competitiveness study, which basically benchmarks us against a number of well, high-performing metro areas in the United States along a number of socioeconomic indicators. This is very specific to how site selection consultants and real, and corporate real estate executives view our MSA against the MSAs that we typically compete against in these various industry sectors. And Madam Chair, you may recall during one of our meetings, we went into great detail about, you know, what that looks like, but this is a very high, high-level summary of, of the, of the study. The, the two components of this study includes a national comparison, and this is a comparison of all MSAs that are larger than 455, 450,000 in population. And then against certain select markets in our, versus our industry sectors in the, the metro areas that we compete for in, in each industry sector. So, for example, what it shows is, when you compare us to other large MSAs, we are doing really well. 119% index. And we're definitely in the top 10% or percentile of the average indexes nationally. Now, when you peel off the selected markets that we compete against by industry sector, we do well, but we're more in the middle of the pack. And this is, this gives you a little bit more information per industry sector. So, in financial and professional services, on the national side, you'll see five of 121. 125 percentile, that is excellent compared to the other MSAs that are 450,000 of population and above. When it comes to the seven metros that we compete against in financial and professional services, again, you know, we're right at, we're in the middle of the pack. So, those are the best of the best in the financial and professional services, and we compete strongly within that area. When you look at each one of these, the, the key takeaway is while we, we fare well nationally, when you look at us within the, the industry sectors that we, the, the markets that we compete against for each one of these industry sectors, we're, we're in the middle of the pack, which makes us, makes us hard to differentiate our competitive strengths against some of the, our competitors' competitive strengths. So, but the long story, the short story of it is, we compete well. We still have a ways to go to differentiate ourselves against our top competitors. But in the long, in the, in the grand scheme of things, this is very positive because the types of markets that we're competing against in these other industry sectors are much larger than us. And, and that's primarily because of the labor availability. When you look at some of the characteristics that we're being judged against, it's things like labor supply, labor cost, infrastructure, healthcare, availability, quality of life, and, and the cost of doing business in our business environment. And so, we stack really well against our competitors, but there are some areas that we need to strengthen. And so, what we intend to do with this information is help some of our advisory councils advise us on any policymaking decisions that need to be made from that, and we'll inform you, the Commissioners' Court, about what some of those issues may or may not be. So, next is marketing. And these are two examples of some ads that were placed. Again, you know, we're not the type of organization, we just, we don't have the resources to put great advertising campaigns out there. It'll eat up our whole budget, but we've been very frugal on and selective on where we place some of these ads. The ad on the left is an ad in the Tampa Bay Times digital section. And this advertisement ran in New York, in New Jersey, the metro area there, Boston, Chicago, and Washington DC. And then the, the ad on the right is a, was an ad in Site Selection Magazine. And this is a magazine that is widely distributed among site selection consultants and real estate advisors. And you'll notice, you know, the things that we highlight are different, you know. In those large metro areas, we talk about how abundant talent is choosing Tampa, and so that company should choose Tampa. That's the number-one factor that's driving corporate relocations and expansions is the availability of good talent. And then on the right, you know, we're, we're actually talking about product. So, if you look at, you know, the four examples we provided, which is Water Street, the Midtown area, the Heights Union, and the Sky Center near the airport, you know, we have new product onboard. And so, real estate consultants and site selection consultants should consider these types of products that's available, that's brand-new, that's available here in the Tampa area. And then, of course, I want to give you a little bit of an update on our Make It Tampa Bay, which is a partnership between us and Visit Tampa Bay. And you may recall, this originated from an idea, basically, that Ron Barton had to help us tweak a message that, you know, is, is about visitors visiting Tampa, but when they visit, they should also consider staying here, growing their business here, growing their profession here, and, and moving here. And so, we've been working with Visit Tampa Bay on, on this campaign. And it was launched in February, and so far, it's pacing really well. It served over 6.3 million impressions through the end of March 22. And 97% of those visiting the Make It Tampa Bay website is from, are new users. And that's, that's great. And the number-one feature that they're looking at in this website is a job search board. So, we're going to be putting more emphasis on the job search board, and our next steps is to work with Visit Tampa Bay in refreshing the website, and then, of course, relaunching it so that it can, you know, garner even more attention. And with that, I just want to say thank you to the, to the Commissioners there, and just really appreciate your support and your leadership. And I also want to thank the county's economic development staff. Ron Barton and his team has been terrific to work for, and we've, you know, received a tremendous amount of success as a result of this collaboration and this partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. I really, truly appreciate your presentation and the information you've brought to us. I unfortunately was not able to send to the rest of the board members the, the Hickey Global report.
Okay.
Prior, I was hoping to get it added to our agenda items today for backup, but it was not there. But I do have it. Thank you for your staff sending it to us yesterday. And I will distribute it out to the board members to review. You know, what's really great is when you bring us this information to show how effective the Tampa Bay EDC is at bringing businesses to our area, creating the high, high-paying jobs and bringing employment opportunities to our citizens. It's also very helpful for us to understand the advantages you've offered that we have. You know, the quality of life here is wonderful, so everybody wants to come. Getting them to show up, and then they get here, and now they never want to leave, as we've experienced by those that work at McDill. Frequently, they, they, they know that once someone has served at McDill, they're coming back. And, and that effort in the defense and other economic opportunities has really shined a, a bright light on that relationship that we have with our businesses as well as with the industry as a whole. Your report did also, that when we did the study, which I really appreciate you doing, it gives us as policymakers good guidance on the things that we are doing to help, and then areas where we can do more, if possible, such as the programs that we've partnered with, with economic development, such as the Future Career Academy, where it goes out and it helps young people that are on the track for filling those manufacturing industry jobs because they have the appropriate vision of that opportunity, but also the skill sets to be able to do that, or at least on path for doing so. So, I'm real proud of our board that's approved those kinds of partnerships in increasing opportunities of job skills that can meet the kinds of occupations in industries that you're bringing to the Tampa Bay area, specifically to Hillsborough County. In addition, the other item that did come out in terms of one of the challenges, our disadvantage that we were facing is relatively new, that we have some challenge with homeownership as the rental market in the Tampa Bay is relatively expensive. So, the continued growth of rental costs may shift the quality of life advantages over the medium term, but we anticipate, as we continue to address our housing inventory, we can address that issue. But it does put pressure on wage increases. And that's been one area where we've shined, as our, our low, our wages have been relatively low compared to other markets. So, I really appreciate that information and look forward to getting the report from your policy groups or committees-
Yes.
-so that we can consider ways that we can continue working in partnership with you. I do see that Commissioner Kemp has her hand raised. Do you have a question, Ms., Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. Thank you. And thank you for the report, and I'll try to be brief, but as, as you are well aware, and I'm, I'm just wondering if there's, if you're, you are well aware, we all are very aware of the situation with affordable housing, and how it is really, it's not just Tampa, but, or Hillsborough County, but it is the, the nation. But we are, I think, especially highly affected by it. We're seeing rent increases higher than almost anywhere in the country, and housing effects of that. And I'm just wondering if that is anything, it, it's probably too early when these surveys were done to, to show up on your reports as being an issue. I, I was just looking at, just happened to stumble on a Business Insider article on counties that lost population and gained population. I just thought every place in Florida will have, be exploding. And I looked, and I was a little shocked to see that Miami Dade, Broward, Orange, Osceola, and Pinellas have all lost population. And I went quickly to look at Miami Dade and see if there's any articles about what the issue is. And they said it was the fact that people have given up, that they feel like they can no longer afford to live there. So, I'm just wondering if that's having any impact, because right now, with people looking for a workforce and the, the issues with that, has, has that bubbled up yet?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that topic up, because it shows up, but it shows up in the cost for businesses now. And as, as Commissioner Overman mentioned earlier, you know, businesses are, are now are, are paying more, wages have increased, and to help employees absorb some of the higher cost of, of the cost of living here in the Tampa Bay area. What we're experiencing is the same thing that other major metros are experiencing. The availability of housing, as well as the cost of housing, is an issue. And we appreciate your efforts in, in helping us address those types of things. But it, it's starting to show up in, only in the sense of the cost for businesses. I think later, you know, the, the results that we've received were for the past four months. I think it has been exacerbated since then. And so, I think we, as this survey continues, we do anticipate additional information and additional data that we'll be able to share with you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. I don't see any other questions at this point, but I do want to thank you very much for the report. And do we need a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
You have a motion by Commissioner Kemp?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Myers. Thank you, Mr. Richards, and, or Mr. Richard, rather. And Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B1. This is to approve the issuance of a work order to HNTB to provide support for the transportation community engagement efforts. And I know that some questions came up this morning that may need to be addressed, and there may be some other questions as well. We have with us John Lyons, who will present this item, and he has additional representatives from HNTB if necessary.
Mr. Lyons, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve the issuance of a work order to HNTB Corporation to provide support for transportation community engagement efforts in a not-to-exceed amount of $699,958.35 for those services. The task and estimated costs are provided in scope of services and food proposals included in the backup. The work includes the development and implementation of a community transportation engagement program that informs and responds to inquiries about the current state of transportation in Hillsborough County. This will be a joint effort between all the municipalities, park, and transportation planning organizations. HNTB will coordinate the effort, collect and assimilate data, letters, and take these processes organizations, engage-
Mr. Lyons, could you get a little bit closer to your mic? We're having difficulty hearing you a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
HNTB will coordinate the collection and assimilation of data related to transportation needs across all these organizations, engage with community groups and stakeholders when requested, develop and maintain digital and printed communications, and respond to public media inquiries. This work conforms with state law and includes, including the recent legislative changes. Overall, 40% of the anticipated services will be performed by subconsultants, with approximately 20% of those services being performed by DWP certified subconsultants. The county will require strict compliance with the requirements of Florida law, and this work orders are not to exceed amount, as the work will be performed on an as-needed basis. basis. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and staff from the consultants are here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I appreciate that. You made reference of the recent legislation that would impact how we communicate an issue associated with the referendum. May I ask Ms. Beck to elaborate on the reasons we've taken this path? County attorney.
Yes, Madam Chair. There was a recent amendment to Florida law in Chapter 22-56, which restricted, further restricted what we are able to do in this area. In essence, it requires more of a reactive mode. But what we have done in assisting staff with this item is we have actually included the requirements of this new law into the contract or the work order, and it is actually set out on pages three and four. So it provides that the consultant and its team of subconsultants will only report on the official actions of the board in an accurate, fair, and impartial manner, will post factual information on government websites or in printed materials, host and provide information at public forums, and provide factual information in response to an inquiry, and provide information as is otherwise authorized or required by law. So that has been directly addressed in the work order.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I see Commissioner White, you have your hand raised. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this item is coming in under Engineering and Operations. I'd like to ask staff about the nexus between this item and engineering because it looks more like communications and public relations work to me when I look at the backup material.
I think the reason that it's Engineering and Operations, of course, John Lyons has been integrally involved with this, and our information that we have provided to you in each of our various workshops have come from the Engineering and Operations area, and that is information that will be also portrayed on the information flow to the community.
Well, I think we have to be very careful here. I'm looking at the websites of a couple of the proposed subcontractors. Playbook Public Relations, for example, on their website says they're an award-winning public relations and marketing firm. It mentions results-driven campaigns. If we look at Johnson Strategies, it mentions that they're involved in political consulting, government relations, public affairs, crisis management. You know, as I've said, the lines can very easily be blurred between education and advocacy. I just think we're on a slippery slope here. I think it's clear from public comment today that people are going to be watching this very closely. I just see a host of potential problems here, and I'm not going to be able to support this expenditure.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, but I would like to actually make a couple of points here. One, it has been the board's pleasure to put referendum on the ballot for November. It is our responsibility to make sure that information is clear. And there is an opportunity here to take the information from each of the stakeholders, not just Hillsborough County, each of the recipients of the sales tax dollars, to provide HNTB, if I understand it correctly, with their long-range transportation goals and projects in order to be able to bring that all together and present that to the public. That's not a marketing. That's gathering information to be available to the public. And we haven't really done that as of yet. Much of our town hall meetings were focused primarily on the needs of unincorporated Hillsborough County and that and the deficits that we had. And the good news is there's an opportunity for us to present how this referendum will impact our community from an education perspective. And part of the reason why the contract is organized in such a way is to assure the public that the county is doing what it needs to do within the law to advise our residents of what this referendum is being presented to voters so that they know without question what they're voting on. I do hear Commissioner White's comment. Yes, there are a variety of organizations that do a variety of things. You know, just because someone can prescribe antibiotics or painkillers doesn't mean they're only doing painkillers. They're addressing what topics they are hired to do. And this contract is very specific on what that process looks like in order to make sure that communications on behalf of the governments reflect the laws of which we will stay in line with. So with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I'll just also state that I appreciate that it was drafted within the scope to include all the jurisdictions and agencies that serve the county. I think it's a long time that we coordinate these efforts in a way that we can cross jurisdictional lines and look at all that. So that's good. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I have my hand up. This is Commissioner Myers.
I'm sorry. I don't see it. My apologies. Please, please proceed. And we do have a motion. Is there a second before we, well, I'll wait to hold on the motion for the second rather than have it fail as a consequence of your desire to speak. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
And thank you, and I appreciate you holding on to that motion.
Madam Chair, point of order. A motion cannot remain on the floor without a second. There's either.
Second. Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kemp and a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Myers, speaking to the motion. Are you recognized?
Yes, and Madam Chair, I had my hand up at the beginning when John Lyons were making his presentation to be recognized. But nevertheless, late yesterday afternoon, I received some concerns about this item and was unable to talk with staff. And my motion is to defer this item until the June 15 meeting. That is my motion.
If that's a substitute motion, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion, Commissioner Myers, and a second by Commissioner White. Is there any discussion? I actually have a question. What is the purpose of the deferral?
I was unable to speak with staff yesterday regarding some concerns that was brought to my attention on this item, and I need to speak with county staff to address some issues on this. And this is the reason I'm asking for this item to come back to the June 15 meeting, to allow me time enough to speak with staff, and staff can answer some questions I have.
Okay. Any other comments? Because apparently the hand raising indicator is not working as well as I'd like to see. Commissioner Smith, I do see your hand up. Please.
Yes, and we need to use the, not the usual right to speak and voting one, but the other one. Okay, the little smiley face there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers, is it possible for you to ask your questions here and get your concerns alleviated so we can move on?
No, because of staff person that I'm trying to connect unless Ms. Wise has something.
So some of the questions relate to the MBE participation, and unfortunately, Ken Jones is on vacation, and so we can't get those questions answered until his return.
May I ask about the timing? How this would, is there, are there any concerns with the timing then being postponed two weeks?
I think the two weeks is going to be just fine.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll support the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, thank you very much. Commissioner Myers, your hand is raised.
I'm sorry, my hand is lowered now. Thank you.
Communications, can you assist in lowering her hand? Thank you very much. I see Mr. Joshua Bellotti is present. Did you have comments that you'd like to make from a staff perspective? No?
No, I don't. I'm for the next item, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. With that, clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you very much. This item is to defer to June 15th, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next item that Josh Bellotti is here for, this is item B2. This is to receive and accept the street lighting program assessment rate study report and to schedule the public hearing for July 20.
Mr. Bellotti, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department, and I will try to make this brief. This item is to schedule a public hearing to adopt the annual rates for the county's residential street lighting special purpose district. This non-ad valorem tax assessment funds the cost of providing street lighting service through TECO to residential street lighting districts throughout unincorporated Hillsborough County. The county's residential street lighting assessment has not changed since 2017. This January, a TECO rate increase went into effect, approved by the Public Service Commission. In order to meet the financial obligations of the program, an additional $2 million in revenue is needed going forward to cover the TECO rate increase as well as replenish program reserves. This amounts to a 20.5% rate increase applied uniformly to street lighting customers. The effect that this rate will have on property owners varies by district depending on the type of street lighting, but for the majority of the 127,000 street lighting customers, this will amount to a $13.10 increase to the annual assessment. Once this year's public hearing is scheduled, the county will mail notices to all property owners who receive street lighting service and advertise the public hearing through legal notice in the newspaper. That's all I have for this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bellotti. As it's very clear that our needs are going to be stretched as a consequence of the increase of the utility, and that unfortunately has to be passed on to the users. A 20% increase is clearly painful, and I'm sure that had more people recognized the Florida Public Service Commission's allowance of approving the TECO's increase in rates passes on. So with that, I don't see any other Commissioners' hand raised. Is there any?
I'll move approval.
Second.
By Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. And seeing no further comments, clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And Josh is here for the next item as well. This is also to schedule a public hearing for July 20. This is for the stormwater fees and non-ad valorem assessment role for calendar year 2022.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Bellotti, you're recognized.
Good morning. As Bonnie mentioned, just as with the last item, this one is also to schedule a public hearing and will be to set the stormwater assessment for the upcoming tax year. This one also proposes an increase of the current assessment. This is in accordance with the five-year plan approved in 2019 that included incremental annual increases up to a maximum rate in order to achieve a sustainable level for the stormwater programs, maintenance, asset preservation, flood protection, and water quality. As you recall, since those initial rates were set in 2019, the next two incremental increases were postponed in response to the pandemic. The county also established the hardship exemption program to provide economic relief and supplemented the stormwater program with one-time American Rescue Plan funds for stormwater flood protection projects. The proposal for this year's rates is to resume the five-year plan with the first of the incremental increases, which amounts to an additional $5.07 for the annual assessment of the middle-tier residential property. This is projected to generate an additional $2.4 million in program revenue annually, which the county plans to invest in enhancing neighborhood resiliency through flood protection projects. Once this year's public hearing is scheduled, the county will mail notices to new property owners and advise the public hearing, advertise the public hearing through legal notice in the newspaper. That's all I have for this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions. Do we have a motion to?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. With that, please, clerk, take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now move to the regular agenda that takes care of all of our time certens. The first item is item B4. This is to adopt a resolution declaring county-owned property named as Parcel 100, which is at the northwest corner of Kennon Street and Oak Preserve Boulevard, and a series of other recommendations from staff. We have John Muller here today to present this item, and with a lot of staff, Anne-Marie Lenton, Rick Valdez, and Greg Horwiddell, staff who have been working on this for quite some time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Muller to go through the presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Agenda item B4 is requesting your approval to adopt a resolution to declare the 61.88-acre county-owned parcel at the corner of Kennon Street and Oak Preserve Boulevard as surplus, as well as approve the steps necessary for us to obtain a fair market value bid price through appraisals and conduct an initial offering with Seville's brokerage, as well as the authority to reestablish an offering price if the parcel does not sell at any initial offering. Of course, any final contract will be brought back to the board for your consideration. The parcel is referred to as Kennon North. This parcel was one of three parcels, Kennon North, Kennon South, and a wildlife corridor, totaling 79 acres, which were approved to purchase in 2005 for park purposes. The closing actually incurred in fiscal year 2006 for $2,213,575. In 2007, both the Kennon North and Kennon South parcel were rezoned for planned development family units as part of a proposed exchange for a site more suitable for sports fields in that community in Cape Bar Ranch, which is in close proximity. However, that proposed exchange did not finalize. The Kennon North parcel was reviewed by Affordable Housing and in April 2021, released back to the Real Estate Department. On the May 5, 2021, BOC C Consent Agenda A37, procurement services rejected an unsolicited offer for Kennon North and recommended for Parks and Recreation to develop a plan for this area of the county with consideration of which properties could help fund park enhancements in this area. Staff's recommendation to you today, based upon Park's plan for this area, is to surplus and sell the Kennon North parcel. The primary use of the surplus funds would be directed to CIP C8000500 for Cross Creek Park construction. The projected spend for this CIP is $8.1 million, of which $1.44 million is currently funded. The Cross Creek construction plan for the park would add a 15,000 to 16,000 square-foot recreation center, parking, shelter, trails, and other park improvements for the community, and also provide programming for the students at the adjacent Pride Elementary. Also, improving Cross Creek Park assists the Parks Department in their overall plan for the area, which recommends rezoning and retaining the Kennon South parcel for park use, and to eventually link Cross Creek Park with Kennon South parcel for one larger community park. We have also recommended that should any funding from the surplus sale not be used at Cross Creek, if that is the case, though unlikely, we would ask that that be allocated for park improvements at the nearby Branston Park, which is about three miles away. And as Bonnie mentioned, Rick Valdez, Director of Parks and Recreation, Anne-Marie Lenton, Division Director of Real Estate, myself, and Deputy County Administrator Horwiddell are available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Thank you. I appreciate it. Are there other individuals that wish to present on this item before we open it up for board discussion?
No, ma'am. I think we'll just take any questions.
Okay. I don't have questions, but I did actually, as soon as I saw this, of course, I this, of course, I, I put my affordable house, uh, affordable, yeah, affordable hat, house hat back on and went, ooh, ooh, land, land, ooh, ooh. And I realized that this particular piece of property had been, uh, declined for, by the affordable housing area because it is way up in the corner, and there's very little, uh, transit and/or services in the area that would serve an affordable housing population. Uh, but I will bring back a request for, uh, consideration of any other surplus lands in the inventory for, uh, for consideration for special populations that we have that are now in, uh, great need for, um, housing just in general. So I'll bring that back and for future discussion. But with that, I'll open it up to, uh, the rest of the board. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll move approval.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan?
Second.
And second by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. Um, I, I would really like to hear from some other commissioners as well as their, um, thoughts about this. Um, I've, uh, you know, this is, this is a very multi-stepped, um, recommended, uh, motion by the board. It has a lot in it. Um, and I, and I've been looking at this, and we should recognize, I think, that approving this resolution, um, that's on page four, this is what the state actually puts in when we do this, when we sell county land, um, it means that we're deciding that selling this 62 acres to the highest bidders in the best interest of the county. And, and I have to say, I'm, I'm really just not there yet. I don't know, um, how much, um, this has been looked at, uh, by others. I didn't, um, quite feel like I had enough information about it at all. And I have a lot of, uh, questions. Um, I have questions first about the environmental lands here. We're talking about 62 acres. I think we're allowing for something like we, the county rezoned this, to allow for, I think, four units per an acre. So we're, um, I'm guessing talking about some 240 residents on this, uh, piece of land or, or something near that or more because some wetlands credit. Um, but this goes, um, this land right now, uh, and it's, it's a big parcel of land, 62 acres, and it is deemed significant wildlife habitat. It's also very much connected to, um, significant wildlife habitat on the Pasco side and, and south, um, down the, um, uh, down and through that area. And I'm, I'm also, um, concerned about deciding how to designate the funds too soon. I think we should have an opportunity, um, to look at how we do that, not have it all packed into this, um, uh, single recommended motion, but to, I think, do it, um, i- in a step-by-step, uh, process that where we're really fully informed of what we're doing. And I'm, I'm just wondering at this point if any other commissioners have, uh, have any issues or, or thoughts about this.
I, I'm not seeing any other hands. I do, uh, uh, appreciate your comment regarding the, the wildlife element. There's a very large, what looks like wetlands area, given that only 38 point, 38 and a quarter of the acres are considered uplands that might be developable, as opposed to the rest of the acreage that could potentially be added to a conservation easement. But, you know, a lot of that would have to do with who purchased the property, I would assume. But Commissioner Smith, I see you recognized.
Thank you.
See your hand up. You're recognized. Sorry.
Right. And, um, Commissioner Kemp, I was, um, also, uh, put off by the complexity of this, um, motion. It seems to me, well, I would prefer to be taking these steps one at a time and in order. Um, the decision to surplus the property is something I'm comfortable with today, um, but, um, uh, some of the other decisions, um, being all baked into this one motion, I think, um, should have further review. For one thing, before we sell this property, um, w- w- we should, we should review the zoning on it because, um, what happened in, as near as I can tell, in 2006, the county purchased this land and, um, uh, along with the southern parcel, and then I think one of the rezonings was to, um, or PRS 071133 was to remove those parcels from the larger live oak PD. And, um, i- in my skimming through, I, I, it, it seems to me that that did not decrease the overall entitlements of the original PD. And so then we immediately rezoned it. Like, we bought it in 2006. Um, I, I, I think it was being said for a park, although it was never, never suitable for a park. It's certainly not suitable for a park today. And in fact, immediately after we purchased it, we, as soon as we purchased it, we turned around and the county, I mean, rezoned it for 143 or four, um, houses. So, so it's clearly we weren't intending to use it for a park. We were intending to sell it to probably somebody who, um, you know, was, uh, waiting for us to put some entitlements on it before they could, uh, they would buy it. So we did that for them, and by we, I mean, the county. This was before most of us were here. Um, so, um, so the county rezoned it in PDO 70533. And I haven't had a chance to really delve into that, but I can tell you this. Uh, any zoning done 15 years ago was, is, was not done, uh, or reviewed according to our current, uh, practices for transportation for, uh, along, uh, several, uh, metrics. And so I would like, before we would sell this parcel to a developer, to make sure that we're comfortable as the county with the zoning that, that we got 15 years ago and possibly review that zoning and, and see if it needs any other conditions. We could, we could put those on quickly before we turn it over to some other developer in that neighborhood. It's up to us. In fact, I mean, one of the things, just looking through, that I, I would be concerned about is, uh, over 25% of the site is wetlands. Um, so out of the 62 acres, about 24 acres of wetlands, although they're, uh, got approval for a developer to develop 48 acres instead of 38 acres, which would be what's left. But anyway, uh, EPC, I see, has an objection to, it's a, it's a two, uh, one of those two option zoning, so you can do option one or option two according to zoning, but EPC has, uh, objections to option one. And, um, you know, I think we should make sure that, that that's, we're not sending that out to a developer, because once we sell it with those entitlements, we can't, um, they can build, uh, they could build option one if that's still in there. Uh, I'm not sure. So I would like all that reviewed, uh, you know, the current, uh, our current transportation staff to review it with an eye to possibly rezoning it or adding conditions to it before we were to, um, sell it. And I think that should be done actually before we have it appraised for sale. Um, so looking at this motion, um, authorize staff to sell parcel, whatever, in, um, you know, it's included in it. I think we should hold off on, on, on that and, and, um, approve setting a minimum bid price, um, and, um, authorize the staff to contract with Savills, uh, for the brokerage, which is a hefty fee. Uh, but, but also, my other concern is in getting the cart before the horse and trying to lump all these steps into one, is, um, earmarking the funds for parks, uh, specific parks. Um, at this point seems, um, to be, to be jumping these projects up in the line ahead of things just because we have this parcel to sell and, and then earmark the funds for this specific purpose. Um, I think, um, once we, you know, like any piece of county property, we surplus it, we sell it, the funds go back into the general fund, and then we have the process for, um, determining prioritizing CIP expenditures in our budgeting process and determining then whether, uh, how we want to use those dollars. Um, uh, so I just think we've, we've lumped too much into, into this, and, and I'd be fine with, uh, surplusing it, declaring it surplusing, and then moving ahead with, uh, reviewing the zoning and consideration of, uh, how that might have, uh, have an appraisal and, uh, selling it and, and then, um, deciding how to spend the funds in the normal course of events, not all wrapped up in this one sale. We're going to sell this property and decide we're using the funds for this, yeah, in this way. I, I don't, I don't think that's the proper process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. And then so, if I understood you correctly, given that we are in the middle of actually approving the, the housing element of the comprehensive plan, uh, that, uh, local governments have the ability to rezone or address comprehensive plan changes, uh, either prior to, uh, on our own, should we choose to do so, we're legally allowed to do so, should we elect to do so, um, is, is your motion to, to bring it back with a, a rezoning consideration?
What are you talking about? Commissioner Hagan's got his hand up.
Okay.
Well, so does Commissioner Kemp, but, before that, uh, but I'll second it if that's a motion.
I haven't made a motion, um, but I'm just, uh, expressing that I'm only comfortable today with, uh, doing option A. Um, at this point, I'll, I'll listen to what the rest of the board says. I, I would vote against doing A, B, C, D, E, all the way through, determining how we're spending this money and who we're, um, hiring for a broker and, and all of that, um, as I said. But, and if the, you know, if the main motion were to fail, I'd, I'd make a substitute motion to that effect.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
That's not a motion.
Oh, it's not a motion. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hagan, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, wasn't planning on, on, on speaking. We're running late here, but I'm gonna make a few comments. I'm gonna try and be as brief as possible. Uh, it's only been 16 years, folks, so I don't think we need to move slower. If anything, we need to expedite things. Uh, the, the, the county commission approved a new Tampa Athletic or Parks Task Force back in '06. The task force made the recommendation to purchase a land because there was fear that land was being, um, taken by, by builders and developers, and there wouldn't be any, any possible locations for future parks. So that's why they made the recommendation. The board ultimately voted to approve it. Shortly afterward, yeah, it became obvious that it wasn't the best spot for park or for fields, which is what the goal was. We've been looking to do a baseball softball complex for at least that long. And so we had an opportunity to do a first-ever city, county, or county-city regional park in Kbar, which is just to the east of this parcel. Uh, it was an excellent model. I thought it was a great vision. There were several delays through the years. The first one with Mayor Iorio wouldn't approve the initial location because she felt there needed to be an east-west road throughout the entire Kbar subdivision. That delayed things a few years. Then they moved the location. That delayed then a couple years. Then we had a, 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 probably a 30-person meeting at city, um, in city offices. I believe Greg Horwiddell was there. I believe Rick Valdez was there. And at the time, um, Bob McDonough, who I love and have a lot of respect for, um, essentially killed the deal because they didn't want there being a complex in a neighborhood. So that's kind of how fast forward to how we got to where we are today. Um, surplus land only makes sense. It's not going to be used as a park. It's not appropriate for affordable housing. It abuts Pasco County. We've had at least one unsolicited bid. I've had two other folks come and interested in putting an unsolicited bid. Staff recommends surplusing it, give everyone a fair chance. Um, the bottom line is, it was purchased for a park. We have the need for additional funding to complete two other projects in New Tampa. It only makes sense to use the dollars for its intended purpose. The reality is, if we do not use this funding to complete the other parks, I'm just going to go through the budget process and try and get the money that way. And I know staff doesn't want that to happen. It makes sense to use the money for what it was intended for, parks. But one, I want, I want to correct Commissioner Smith on one thing. Today's item does not approve the funding to go to any particular project. If you look at the agenda item, it says it's going to be deposited to the B O C C's unincorporated area general fund as additional funding to be appropriated to the Parks and Rec CIP program. While Parks is recommending it be used for Cross Creek, it makes the most sense. The reality is, that's an argument for another day. So I'm not even going to go down that path because it's, it's not included in the agenda item. We need to move forward with this. We should have moved forward with this years ago, and any type of delay, I think, is, is unnecessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, your hand is raised.
Sorry. Uh, sorry, I, um, am having trouble pulling that up. Okay, got it. Taking my hand down.
Okay. All right. And are there any other-
I have my hand raised. I've had it raised for a long time.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm unable to see that. Commissioner Kemp, I apologize. You're recognized. And then I do see Commissioner Cohen's hand went up, and I see, uh-
Ms. Wise.
Ms. Wise's hands did rise. So Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. I have, um, one question for the attorney, for, um, Ms. Beck. So if this land were surplus, if we, if we were to take that action today, could then we go to a rezoning?
Let me see if Rick Shons can answer that. I'm, I'm, I mean, if you're surplusing it, um, I think it would need to be done beforehand, is my gut reaction, but I'm, I'm a little bit, um, unsure since it wasn't something I had researched. Uh, Rick, do you have anything to add to that? I know it's-
This is Rick Shons. I am on the line. Um, however, I am not 100% certain I'll have it either. Um, hate to put someone else on the spot, but, uh, I believe Adam Gormley might be on the line that could maybe do a better answer than me on this question.
Mr. Gormley, are you available? Hello?
He's always used to ask, answering questions that he hasn't been asked till the last minute and coming up with the authoritative answer.
Mr. Gormley, you're recognized. And we can't hear you yet. Yeah, I think you're muted, sir.
Me, all right. Sorry about that.
I can hear you now.
All together now. Um, so, so the, uh, if the, once the, in order to rezone the property, we would need the authorization from the property owner or, or in, in some instances, the county can, can initiate a zoning on, on its own. So the, the clean path would be as, as long as the county still is the owner of the property, um, then a rezoning could be initiated on, on our own property. Um, I, I don't, you know, unless there's something in the surplusing that, that would constrain that, basically as long as the county is still the owner of the property, we have a, a clean path of, of, of authorizing a zoning change, um, and we'd be dealing with our own rights. So we would not be affecting the rights of a third party by doing that.
Thank, thank you for that. I have some, I just want to point out a few things about this. So it, it, it is very significant that this was done 16 years ago. So no one in that neighborhood around there has noticed now of this rezoning. Right now, we're hearing from Keystone residents, at least I've heard loud and clear, maybe others have. They're very, very, uh, angry that a rezoning was done in the 90s, that they knew nothing, that they had no input and no knowledge of, and all of a sudden, that's being built now. We, it's not even coming before this board. We have absolutely, uh, no, no impact on what that is, um, and it's way different than what we would permit now. Um, I've- I've had to deal with a number of questions and, you know, had to respond to that in the neighborhood and to the press as well, about our, you know, our responsibility for that. So here we have an area where no one, I mean, probably almost everybody there has started living there, you know, within the last 16 years, or maybe a few that are a little longer. They don't have notice. I don't even know what happened when that rezoning happened. You know, there might have been a lot of objections then to exactly what it was, maybe there was nothing. But, I really think it is really unwise to move forward as this county commission and say that what was rezoned 16 years ago by us, that we have responsibility for, that we're just going to go forward with that, sell it with that rezoning on it, and then have, you know, people come to us and complain later and feel that there wasn't proper process or due process. I don't understand why we would do that as well. I can't tell you, as a person that has been on the TPO, the TMA, and this, I mean, one of the pressing big issues that I hear all the time is Kenan Road and the connection on the other side to Pasco County. That's, I guess, like Meadows Boulevard. Okay, so we've heard about how that doesn't connect, and now they, you know, because Hillsborough County paid, we paved a little side over to the other side. I guess it has emergency connection, but I've heard endlessly about this very dire issue, that we're not connected, and there's no right of way, and that there's issues because of that. And right at the edge of that, we're going to add in, I don't know, without even looking at it again, 140, or however many units it is, right there, as well. The South Kenan was rezoned at the time, one year after they were purchased for parkland, they were rezoned suddenly for pretty dense development, right at the edges there of where there is little outlet. And so, I understand the South Kenan property is going to be governmental, quasi-governmental, so it's going to change from being the rezoning that it is now, to government, quasi-governmental, to be part of the park area there. It seems to be wise and prudent to bring both of these to that area and have our, you know, hear from them, and maybe the South Kenan property never being developed will be something that would be positively looked at in regards to this. But I really don't want to take responsibility for this later and have, coming in here and have, you know, us say that we did this rezoning, a former board, that we didn't ever look at it, that we didn't consider, you know, what it was, and just went on, sold the property with the rezoning as it is. And there's really, there isn't a rush to do this. We, I think, need to take the steps and do this with, to me, you know, just, this is just a small amount of due diligence, I think, and a responsible way to move forward on it, truly. So, I would support if, you know, Commissioner Smith, obviously, I'd support a motion like that. I won't support the motion as it is now, it just has, I mean, I really think we have to move forward in a way that is informed and thoughtful about how we do this, and I don't want to end up surpassing selling and then having us be, you know, under, have citizens in here who are angry that we didn't make this move and just do this, this simplest of steps.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I don't see anybody's hand, other than Administrative Wise's hand up. Are there any other hands raised? Seeing none, Ms. Wise, you're recognized.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a clarification and remind you of the correction I had to make to the agenda. So the revenue from the anticipated sale of the property would be deposited to the countywide general fund, and to be consistent with the Parks and Recreation CIP program. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Smith, your hand is up.
Yes. Okay, I'll just run this up the flagpole and make a motion to defer the whole thing in light of the comments that Commissioner Kemp and I have made, the concerns we've raised, and the feedback we've gotten back from staff. There seems to be a little bit of question about whether, you know, how the zoning review would look, would work, and I would move to defer it, to get these questions answered to the July 20th regular meeting on the regular agenda, and ask Development Services staff to review the rezoning with our transportation, with EPC, and take a look at the existing zoning, at least, with an eye to how it fits with our current zoning processes and what we now know about the traffic in the area. And, that would be my motion. I mean, I'm still going to wonder about the process of how we spend the money, but for now, I would ask the board to defer so we can get some of these questions answered to the July 20th meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, and I'm assuming the clerk is going to be able to figure all that out, and we have a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen, your hands up, please. You're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to ask a question of the maker of the motion, so I'm clear about this, or maybe have a suggestion to it. If it's going to come back on July 20th, I think it needs to come back with some kind of plan for how it moves forward, not just come back with some questions answered, but, you know, I, in listening to Commissioner Hagan's remarks, it sounds like something that's been going on for a while, and it seems like if we could get the questions answered, it would be good to have then maybe a broken-down timeline of exactly how all this would work so we could get from point A to point B. Because I don't really have a problem with the concept of taking money from this and investing it in parks that are very close by. I think there's a real nexus in doing that. But, so I don't want it to get so gummed up that we sort of lose track of the whole thing, and I'm hoping when they come back, it will have action items that can be taken in some kind of order so that we'll have something to vote on, and then we can watch it as it proceeds.
Thank you. And so my motion was pretty simple, it was just to defer the whole thing to the July meeting, but specifically request Development Services to really do a review with an eye to answering our questions about whether this needs rezoning in order to benefit from conditions. I expressed my concerns about the process, but since I am not sure where the rest of the board is on that, that's not part of the motion. I agree with bringing it back with clearer steps and possibly in separate bites next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. So we have a motion by Commissioner Smith and a second by Commissioner Kemp. Are there any other comments? I see three hands raised, Smith, Kemp, and Cohen.
Hagan.
And, okay, for some reason, I can't see yours. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to oppose the motion, I think we should stick with the original one. That being said, regarding the zoning, I'll tell you right now, I don't want to do anything with respect to zoning or conditions that's going to potentially reduce the value of the property. I mean, the whole goal is to get as much, to get the highest price as possible, so I'm going to tell you that right now. Secondly, as I said earlier, I don't care if we surplus this land or not, or if it goes to parks or not, but the reality is, the money's going to have to come from somewhere else. So if this is being deferred July 20th, Bonnie, go ahead and put on my flag list 3.5 million for parks in New Tampa, because that's going to come from another source. So it only makes sense, but as far as timing or if we surplus it or not, one way or the other, we're going to get the money.
Any other comments? Given I only see Commissioner Kemp's hand raised. Commissioner Kemp? Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Hagan, Myers, and White voted no.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Can, if I could.
You're recognized.
Yeah, I'd just like to be recognized for another point about this, that I had concerns about, and I'd just like to mention it to the board now, I guess I could say it in future items, but I was a little surprised, I'll say, when I saw that there was a named broker, Seville, Sevilles, in this, as someone who automatically was the brokerage service that we would use for this contract. Because I'm just used to the procurement process, where there's some kind of RFP for consulting projects, or any other kinds of projects we do. So I just thought it would be land, like anything else, might be like an RFP kind of process. And so, I had asked about it, just because I was curious if there was some kind of lottery that picks this, or how it's done. And I don't know that I know the whole story, I would say, on exactly how this was done, but I would like to really have asked the board for their support in a little review of this process from, what I understand is that there were, and, by the way, in our packet here, there's, it's not that large a packet, but there, it looks like if this property went for 4 million, that the broker would, because we put it in the contract for them to get it, they would be making 240,000, and it goes up 50,000 every other million that's added to it. That's really substantial, it's way more substantial than many of the consulting contracts that we have, or others. And I, so I thought it, I was surprised that it's not some kind of more competitive process that we do, and I understand there were kind of three companies that are, I guess, on a state contract, that typically do this, but that we use Sevilles because Sevilles is the most knowledgeable in this area. But I guess I just didn't feel comfortable with the designation or the process, and I'm not sure that I do understand the process, or that I'm describing it accurately in any way, but I just would like the staff to bring back some information about, I'd like to make a motion to have the staff bring back information with regards to how these kinds of contracts are assigned in land, in these land sales, and look at that and just understand if that's best practices, or if there's any other concerns that we should have about this.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Thank you for asking that question, I think it would be to get clarity. Are you planning on having that come back before we address this item on June, on July 20th, so maybe come back with a report on the 15th?
That could be, I think, that would be good.
Okay.
If we could do that. Can we do that, Ms. Wise?
We'll try, since the agenda deadline is probably tomorrow.
And maybe if not, it can come back. I mean, I think it would be good to come back, I'd just like to understand it more in there, yeah.
And it's a good question, because typically, when we're doing affordable housing, land, you know, deals, if you want to call it that, they are done by RFP, but in other circumstances, it's not. So having some clarity there, I think, would be helpful for not only the board, but also the public to understand what their opportunities are there. It may also give us an understanding of, given what we're going to hear back from Mr. Wormley, on opportunities to bring the land code up to current standards, rather than having us live with entitlements. Maybe we can get a little bit insight at that same time. But that could be a separate motion, depending on timing, so I appreciate this particular item. Any other discussion?
If I just may, too, I don't know how the DBE or anything intersects with that as well. You probably will resent that, but I think that, as well.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent. With that, seeing no other hands raised, unless someone speaks up and indicates they have one up. Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. The good news is, is that it does look like this is a good concept, that it's going to grow legs, that we can work with, get this done. So, with that, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. It's a little after 12, and so trying to gauge your interest in plowing forward a little bit more, or what's your preference?
I think we're too long to say.
We have a fair amount still on the agenda, several regular items, as well as various staff reports.
The next section is Budget Management and Budget, so we're covering a lot of those. There's one, two, three, four under that category. What's the board's pleasure?
It sounds like some folks would like to take a break.
It is now 12:07, so if we do have a consensus on taking a break to return at, is 1:15 sufficient?
That's good. There's head shaking, yes.
Excellent, thank you very much, because I have difficulty seeing this little teeny tiny screen. Thank you. And so with that, we will take a recess until 1:15. Thank you very much. Welcome back to the Board of County Commission meeting on June 2nd, and we will proceed on to the regular agenda, item B5. Ms. Wise, you're recognized.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh, do we need to do a roll call?
Please have a roll call.
Yeah, I was going to say, do we need to do a roll call? Thank you.
Overman?
Yeah, here.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We have a series of three American Rescue Plan items pursuant to the various conversations we've had, and Tom Fessler is going to take us through those items allocating those funds.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. I have three items to go over with you today. Item B5. Item B5 is asking the board to approve $24 million in funding for affordable housing with American Rescue Plan funds. Along with that, we're also asking you to approve a budget amendment to increase appropriations by $24 million from ARP reserves. The funding will be used to acquire and renovate, is intended to be used to acquire and renovate properties for the purpose of providing affordable housing. We have chosen acquire and renovate because that provides for getting the funds out on the street a little quicker than if we were to do something other, go some other direction. We identified, our projects identified for the use of the funds will, at some point, be brought back to the board for approval. The use of the funds for this particular purpose was identified as an option in the American Rescue Plan Investment Plan approved by the board on September 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Fessler, for that report. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith, I believe. With that, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, board. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And the next item is also American Rescue Plan. This is for $3 million for various pickleball complexes, and Tom Fessler will take us through that as well.
Commissioners, item A, or B6, is asking you to approve a new capital project for pickleball comp- pickleball complexes using $3 million in American Rescue Plan funds. Along with that, goes approve, is approving a resolution amending the adopted fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '27 capital improvement program to add a pickleball complexes project. And then finally, to approve a fiscal year '22 budget amendment for $3 million to realign funds for the project. A project such as this is an option that was included in the investment plan that the board approved back in September of 2021. The project will be funded from the replacement revenue category, revenue replacement category in the ARP. In November of 2021, the Parks Department presented a staff report to the board identifying that pickleball was becoming a very popular sport on a nationwide basis. That report also identified the fact that the county had identified six different complexes that spanned across the county that were opportunities to provide some additional pickleball courts. And those projects just needed about $3 million in funding to be able to complete them. This project will provide county residents with an opportunity to pursue outdoor activities, which is consistent with some, some of the ideas that can, included in the American Rescue Plan. It does provide pickleball also in some areas of the counties that are underserved. The specific complexes that would be targeted for the funding would be the North Lakes Sports Complex, the Westwood Lake Park Complex, Higginbotham Park, Springhead Park, Progress Village Park, and Baum Park. The proposed project would create 36 new pickleball courts, bringing the county's total pickleball courts to 52. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Move approval?
Second. A motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen?
Cohen, yeah.
Okay, Cohen, excellent. I just have a real quick question. So you had, Tom, thank you very much for your report. You made reference to the qualifications of this, these funds being used as for, for this purpose, being part of a revenue replacement. What revenues were lost during COVID that are in need of being replaced for this specific capital improvement plan, as it pertains to parks?
Sure. So Commissioner, on an overall basis, as it relates to the American Rescue Plan, the actual, the Treasury has put out guidance to all county and city governments as to, there's a calculation that's very specific on, on how you would calculate revenue replacement. It, it spans the spectrum across all of your revenues across the county. So we followed a template that was put together by the Government Finance Officers Association, which identified just a little over $70 million as, as revenue that we could consider to be revenue that was being replaced from revenue that we were, that was lost. But it basically spans across all your different revenue sources.
Okay. So in other words, as a consequence of COVID, we had revenues that, that were not able to be allocated towards this project, and this is replacing those revenues. Is that correct?
Commissioner, you could, yes, you could look at it that way. I won't say that we had funds at that point specifically targeted for this purpose. But that was something, certainly, we had a staff report that was made to the board. It identified a need for $3 million if the board wanted to pursue the increase in the number of pickleball courts on, on a countywide basis. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to use American Rescue Plan dollars to provide for the pickleball courts. Again, it provides for outdoor activities, which is definitely something that's identified in the American Rescue Plan, is something that helps to prevent the spread of COVID. It also provides an opportunity to provide some amenities in underserved areas of the county, which again is also a focus of the ARP. So we thought this would be an appropriate project.
I, I understand. Thank you very much. I, it's, it's just, each time we approve these, spending of these dollars, it's a policy decision to spend it in that, you know, in order to address the economic impact of, disadvantaged in those communities that are impacted. So it sounds as though this, this decision is to move forward with that goal. So thank you very much. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if we still have park staff tuned into the meeting, but I did not hear Saladino Park on that list. Is it moving forward with a different funding source?
Hello, Commissioner White. This is Rick Valdez, Director of Parks and Rec. And yes, Saladino Project is already moving forward. We were able to utilize impact fees that were available in that area.
That's right. That's already been on the agenda, right, a number of months ago?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Quick question. Are all the pickleball courts that will be funded by this, with this money, are they all outdoor courts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. So we have Commissioner Kemp. You're recognized.
I'll just take a fast second to chime in and say yay for the increased park fees, impact fees. I'm glad to hear it's paying for that project, and we need to do more. Sounds like we have the Manhattan Project for pickleball here in Hillsborough County. But anyway, at that.
So we have a motion and a second. And can we get a roll call vote, please?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
And the one final American Rescue Plan item that we mentioned was coming is regarding the sheriff for various facilities, technology, equipment, under the public health and revenue replacement category. But Tom Fessler will give us some more detail on that.
Sure. So Commissioners, item B7 today is asking you to approve an interlocal agreement with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office to provide American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of $6,967,500. And to also approve a budget amendment to appropriate funds associated with that agreement. $4.5 million of the funding will be used at the jail to, to renovate and establish a mental health pod at the jail. So that is an activity that's specifically mentioned in the American Rescue Plan. Mental health is, is a big focus of the plan. So we thought that this would be a good use of the funds. In addition to that, the sheriff will be using the funds to provide for some facility improvements that, that are needed because of COVID, and also some technology and personal protective equipment. If the board were to approve this item along with the other two items that were ARP items approved today, the board will have committed 275 million of the 285 million of available ARP funds. We are shortly expecting to receive the second 50% of the funds from, from the American Rescue Plan. We received the first half a year ago, and within the next couple of weeks, several weeks, we're expecting to receive the remaining funds.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board discussion?
Move approval?
Second.
Excellent. I did want to say that this is an excellent project. The Public Safety Coordinated Council has been addressing some of the biggest challenges associated with individuals coming out of the correctional systems or whether out of the jail, and recognizing the need to help individuals with referral services and support services, mental health services, in order to have them move back into society successfully. And this is one of the sheriff's, pieces of the sheriff's plan to make that happen. And I appreciate him bringing that forward. With that, we have a motion and a second. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next item is asking the county attorney's office to revise the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste. Kim Byer is going to go through that little presentation for you. But I did want to thank staff for coming up with a very creative, one-time solution, working with the county attorney's office and the clerk's office, to not have us raise the residential solid waste rates for this year. And I just wanted to be able to mention those accolades to them. So Kim Byer is going to take us through this presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Kimberly Byer, Soil Waste Department Director. I'm here today to request the board to direct the county attorney's office to draft a revision to Chapter 130 of the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws related to soil waste collection and disposal, changing the reference to, in the code from a calendar year, non-advalorm assessment to a fiscal year, non-advalorm assessment, to be consistent with other county assessments, and to eliminate the deferred revenue requirement. Modifying this reference to reflect the fiscal year will make available sooner approximately 30 million in revenue. I have a short presentation today associated with this request. Thank you. Next slide, please. Currently, the soil waste rates are shown on our customers' annual tax bill as a non-advalorm soil waste collection and disposal assessment. These assessments are currently written in the code for services provided on a calendar year, although our budget is developed on fiscal year, and all other taxes are assessed on a fiscal year, such as stormwater, streetlighting, and property taxes. Next slide, please. In FY '22, the soil waste assessments were increased to $352.70 due to the new franchise collector agreements that were awarded in June of 2021. At that time, we also planned for additional increases in FY '23 to fund additional operational increases. However, because of the economic condition of the county, we really tried to seek out innovative ideas to hold rates flat for FY '23. Next slide, please. Because of the solid waste rates are assessed on a calendar year, 25% of the revenue received is restricted as deferred revenue that can't be used for the benefit of the ratepayers. Next slide, please. If rates were flat, like they were in 2013 to 2019, this would not be an issue. However, because we are in an increasing rate environment, as rates increase, so does the deferred revenue. Next slide, please. By making this ordinance change to a fiscal year assessment rather than a calendar year assessment, soil waste can take advantage of $30 million to fund operations from October 2022 to December of 2022, holding our residential customer rates flat at $352.70 for FY '23. Next slide, please. This deferred revenue is a one-time benefit. Therefore, rates, rate increases will be requested in FY '24 to fund the franchise collection contract increases in addition to the infrastructure needs of the department. Additionally, we will be before you in August, I'm sorry, in July 20th to adopt the solid rates, rates and disposal fees. This concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this request. Thank you.
Byers, thank you very much. We all know that increased expenses towards housing is a challenge right now, given property values and the fact that we're going to see an increase in, in advalorm and other assessments. And we had this plan to increase these fees. So bringing this to the table to offset the increase that was scheduled for this year is a great way of showing how we're sensitive to that and, and are doing everything we can to try and keep our expenses lows to our residents.
Move approval?
I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Myers. And I don't see any other discussion or hands raised, so please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is approving a budget amendment of 25 million from the Series 2022 Utility Revenue Letter of Credit Fund. And Beth Chanello will take us through this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Beth Chanello, Director of Water Resources Department. Item B9 requests approval of a fiscal year '22 budget amendment resolution to realign $25 million from the Series 2022 Utility Revenue Letter of Credit Fund to support Water Resources South County System expansion capital projects. This realignment improves the timeliness of design and construction solicitations for the new wastewater reclaim water pipelines. There is no financial impact to the Water Resources Department from this realignment for the current capital program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do I have any comments or questions from the board?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Your next item is the appointment to the Tourist Development Council, item F1A. And is Luanne there?
Yes. So we just have the one board, Tourist Development Council. Please choose one, Commissioner Overman.
Four.
Commissioner Smith?
Four.
Commissioner White?
Three.
Commissioner Cohen?
Four.
Commissioner Hagan?
Four.
Commissioner Myers?
Four.
Commissioner Kemp?
Four. Did you hear me?
Okay. Andrea Gonsmart Williams will be appointed.
Move to confirm?
Second.
Given motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item regarding flying the flag for Juneteenth from June 15th to June 30th, 2022, and the annual thereafter. Item F2.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is self-explanatory. But I do like to invite the entire board to the ceremony at 8:00 AM that morning, and raising of the flag on June 15th. So I move for approval of this item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith, I think. And seeing no, Commissioner Kemp, your hands raised.
Yes, I just want to thank Commissioner Myers for bringing this forward. I think it's really excellent that we're going to have a Juneteenth flag outside of county center. And I'm, I'll be really happy to see it go up.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Absolutely agree. With that, can we do a roll call vote?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We now have a series of board-requested staff reports. The first one is of Communications and Digital Media, item G1. This is regarding how housing and eviction programs and resources are being communicated to county residents. We have Terry Cordova-Huwa here to present the item, but we also have Audrey Ziegler and Cheryl Howell, if the board has any questions as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome, team.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Terry Cordova-Huwa, Director of Communications and Digital Media. HTV, you can go ahead and start the, the slides, please. We were asked a few weeks ago to provide a report on how housing and eviction programs and resources are being communicated to our county residents. Next slide, please. Communications and Digital Media works closely with departments throughout the county to develop, develop communication strategies to promote county-led initiatives. This process starts typically with a discovery process meeting that helps us to identify objectives, target audience, program goals, and in this case, funding, funding capacities. After the discovery process is completed, we develop a communication plan, which depending on the goals, objectives, and target audience, could include various tactics. This multi-channel approach could include a press release announcing the launch of a new program, and a newsletter reminding residents to complete their applications, or a Facebook post sharing a success story. Some strategies also include departments' community outreach efforts through community partnerships and neighborhood leaders. Others could include social media engagement and media storytelling. During the life cycle of a campaign, we are constantly evaluating how the outreach, outreach efforts are affecting the program's goals and objectives. We analyze a lot of different touchpoints, such as how many times somebody has linked, clicked on a linked program, how many times they have visited a website page, and the number of submitted applications. We take all of this data and optimize our engagement efforts as needed to be successful. Our efforts are always data-driven. If a program closes, we change our direction and strategy, and instead of promoting the program, we promote the success stories of how it has helped our residents. Next slide, please. Thank you. Communications and Digital Media works very closely with social services on a multitude of programs, like the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. of programs, like the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Since the day of the program was launched, Communications and Digital Media has worked hand-in-hand with social services to educate and assist residents who qualify for the program, as well as encourage partners to participate in sharing the information. We have developed developed a multitude of press releases and pitches to media outlets, and between December 1st and May 5th, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program was featured on more than 20 stories, which generated more than $1.6 million in media value and reached more than 165 million viewers due to our efforts. We have also hosted multiple landlord information sessions to help landlords understand the importance importance of participating in the program. We've worked directly with the City of Tampa on promotions of the program and sharing the same messaging as we are not only allocating county-awarded funding, but also city-awarded funding. We have also created promotional materials for landlords and tenants, both in English and Spanish, resulting in driving web traffic for the most for the most up-to-date information to our website. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, social media is one of the strategies that we use. Communications and Digital Media develops digital content that informs residents about the purpose and opportunity to participate in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We have promoted the Emergency Rental Assistance Program on the county's social media channels such as Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn by sharing promotion graphics and the newsroom stories. Since December, the posts have seen more than 204 impressions and almost 19,000 engagements. And for clarity, Commissioners, impressions is the number of times a post was displayed or delivered to a feed, and engagement is when the viewer takes an action to your post, such as a like, makes a comment, or shares a post. Next slide, please. Another tool that we use to educate our residents about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is the website. Between the newsroom stories and the program webpages, since December 1st of 2021, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program has been has had more than 81,172-page visits, and website visitors have spent an average of a minute and 20 seconds on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The standard average a person spends on a page is about 52 seconds. As you can see from the heat map in front of you, residents engage with the content relevant to their questions about the program, and 62% of the residents who took the webpage survey found the information helpful. And just for clarity, the heat map that you're seeing is similar to a weather Doppler map. The darker the colors on the screen means the more aggregated activity there is in a specific area. So for example, the in the central panel, the orange and yellow and blue circle, that says the words I'm a renter, and there was a lot of activity in that area. So I just wanted to just make that clear, but it's very similar to what we see in a weather map. Next slide, please. Social Services has been a major asset to the county's residents, especially during the last two years. Social Services has not only focused on serving residents through its core services, like the Energy Assistance and Rental Assistance Programs that were in place prior to the pandemic, but also took COVID-19-related programs like the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Through the public and communications outreach, Social Services programs have been consistently meeting goals and objectives to ensure residents are in need are being served. Over the past six months, Social Services has assisted close to 14,000 households throughout the county in relation to the housing and eviction crisis, with 56% of those 14 households residing in the 10 SIP codes shown on the slide. Through one program or another, Social Services has assisted residents in every Hillsborough County SIP code since December. Social Services is assisting an average of about 2,785 households a month through five funding sources. Next slide, please. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program is one of the leading county programs assisting residents in need of financial assistance and keeping residents in their affordable housing. Since launching in March of 2021, Social Services has allocated more than $59 million in funding through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. By approving more than 15,000 applications, the program has paid 14,630 landlords directly to ensure outstanding balances are rectified and tenants are able to remain in their current homes and have helped more than 15,000 households. The top SIP codes that have received more, around 61%, of the $59 million are seen in the slide in front of you. Next slide, please. Communications and Digital Media also works very closely with affordable housing to promote and educate the community on how the county is supporting local housing and community development projects that directly impact residents looking for affordable opportunities. Communications works with affordable housing on a monthly basis to promote the department's various funded projects and programs. For instance, we work with affordable housing and habitat amenity of Hillsborough County to promote the newly-created Suite Dacia Estates community and the impact it would have on 10 new homeowners. Communications and Digital Media provided partner collaboration assistance, media relations outreach, public relations production, and event support at the official ribbon cutting. Over the past few months, Hillsborough County Affordable Housing and its funded projects have been featured in more than 45 new stories that have been viewed by around 417 million people and have earned around $3.9 million in media value. We have also increased affordable housing's social media presence by sharing newsroom stories created to promote the life-changing funding the county provides to the projects. Next slide, please. The Tenants Bill of Rights ordinance was enacted more than a year ago. Code Enforcement, Consumer Protection, and Communications continue to educate not only the landlords that are required to provide notice documentation of tenant rights, but also to residential tenants in unincorporated Hillsborough County about their rights. Community outreach is a large component of the education process and enforcement of the ordinance, which is overseen by Code Enforcement and Consumer Protection with the assistance from Communications. Outreach efforts have included webinars for rental industries, officer and investigator visits to nearly 400 apartment communities, and continued tenant-focused workshops hosted in the community. Just in the past few months, the Tenant Bill of Rights Resources Notice, which is required by the ordinance for landlords to provide to tenants, has been accessed more than 530 times from the county's website. Next slide, please. Earlier this year, the board approved funding for Bay Area Legal Services to create a program to assist residents in need of assistance solving a dispute with a landlord. Bay Area Legal Services established a Housing Stability Program. Bay Area Legal oversees the public outreach of the program with the help of Communications to provide information on the county's website and pages related to the to housing and eviction issues. Since launching the program less than three months ago, Bay Area Legal has enrolled 58 residents into the program and has referred more than 40 of those residents to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. 81% of those referrals have either been fully approved for assistance or pending approval. This shows the demand to resources are well aligned. Next slide, please. And this concludes my presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you very, very much. That was very thorough. I appreciate you bringing that back to us. I see Commissioner Kemp has a question, and I have a follow-up question. Commissioner Kemp?
I'm sorry, it's been left on.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll ask my question. And actually, and say thank you. You know, all of the team that we see are have done a great job of making sure that, one, these programs got up and running and are delivering the services to our residents. And, you know, an important partnership with that is how we communicate that. I do appreciate that all of the press and the media and the social media. I did want to ask a question regarding the opportunity, as we heard in the Equity Profile presentation, that it is critically important to meet people where they are. And while Twitter and LinkedIn and Facebook are very helpful because people are on those platforms, they aren't regionally significant. In other words, you know, if you live in Texas, you can still see your post on on our Home Stabilization Program, for example. So I was curious about the process of possibly using other means, as we have with our neighborhood communications. We traditionally have relied on our neighborhood associations and those groups to distribute information that's important for, say, zoning hearings or programs such as we've heard today. And then I know that some governments have relationships with Nextdoor that would allow these information on these programs to have a longer shelf life. Let's just put it that way. In other words, you know, if you happen to catch it on the news, you see it, if you remember to write it down, if you figured out what page it was on and you actually found it, that would be awesome. But if it's if it's sitting on a social media site that has a shelf life, is that an opportunity to meet people where they are? I was curious if what what opportunities lie there?
Thanks for the question. We we have various tools that we use that look at to analyze our efforts. Community outreach is incredibly important for us, Commissioner. You're correct, we need to meet our residents where they are, and there's so many various platforms that our residents can be on. So we we look at analytic numbers on a daily basis, both for our social media engagement and website engagement through various tools. And we also look at our outreach efforts that we work with our departments and their partners as well as our community partners. So we kind of look at a host of various ways to reach our clients, or not our clients, but our residents, to meet them where they are. So I completely understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the thought on the question. Hope that answers your question.
It does. I just I know that we have some level of subscription to Nextdoor, or at least we have that available to us, and I would recommend that we adopt what we've done when it comes to, say, for example, you know, news stories, though that specifically talk about, for example, our ERAP program or the Home Stabilization Program, which is another name for eviction assistance, that that is oftentimes difficult to find on our website because it wasn't originally search engine mapped that way. So there are opportunities, I think, that we could utilize Nextdoor as a way of having a little more shelf life than you would normally find on a lot of social media pages. So because of the categorization that's available there, you could say, you know, government benefits or those kinds of things. So I thank you so much for bringing this back to us. And our partners, I see on the screen with with Audrey Ziegler, who I still count as a gigantic hero on the face of the earth and appreciate all that she does, as well as Ms. Howell in working with us on the the eviction mitigation program, which is the Home Stabilization Program, the ERAP, and the Tenant Bill of Rights. All of you have been instrumental in providing resources to assist our residents and tapping into resources when they are in need of addressing not only COVID, but also, you know, their rights when it comes to housing, when we have such a kind of a big issue with that right now. So thank you so very much for your report. I don't see any other questions from the Commissioners. And with that, we'll just consider a motion to receive your report.
So moved.
Second. And we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Thank you very much. Take a roll call.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
The next three staff reports are from the county attorney's office. This was a report that the board had asked for regarding the issue of sale of Delta 8 products in Hillsborough County and Deborah Cromarty-Mincy or Whitney Green, I'm not sure who's doing it. Okay. And also, we have Joe Gross available as well, who was mentioned earlier today. So with that, we can turn it on over to the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Bonnie, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Deborah Cromarty-Mincy, County Attorney's Office. I'll just take this moment to introduce Whitney Green. She's a new attorney in the office. She worked extensively on this issue and will be presenting the legal aspects of this report. Whitney?
Thank you very much, Deborah, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Back in March of this year, in response to a citizen concern about Delta 8 hemp candies getting into the hands of children, the board asked us to work with staff to investigate the complaint, as well as how these products are being sold at retail in the county, and to explore the state of the law on these products and determine the board's authority with respect to regulating these types of products. And as a result of that collaboration, we've provided the board with a written report detailing our legal research, as well as the results of staff's investigations. And what we found from the legal perspective is that Florida has a state hemp program with a comprehensive set of regulations for the cultivation, manufacturing, and retail sale of hemp products, which include Delta 8. The program was approved by the federal government, and these products are legal to sell as long as they comply with the state regulations. Currently, inhalable products, like vape oils, cannot be sold to people under 21, but there are no age limits in the law on ingestibles. There have been two attempts in the past sessions of the legislature to put an age restriction on ingestible products, but neither of those bills were successful, and there are currently no directives on how the products have to be displayed in the store. As further detailed in our report, state law explicitly preempts local legislation in many areas around food and retail establishments, but it appears that the board could enact an ordinance imposing age restrictions for those ingestible products and put some regulations on how the products are displayed in the store, like being in a locked case or behind a counter. A preemption challenge, however, is still possible, and to our knowledge, these types of regulations would be the first of their kind in our state on the local level. I will now turn it over to Joe Gross and his staff from Consumer Protection and Code Enforcement to address their investigations and their recommendations.
Thank you, Whitney, and Deborah, and good afternoon, board. So we were asked to investigate the concerns, refer the issues that we encounter to appropriate authorities, and then determine the extent of any other issues. So our first step was to contact Ms. Snelling, who you heard from this morning, identify the original location, and engage the Florida Department of Consumer Services, who I'll refer to as F-TAX, who did promptly respond. In April, Code Enforcement's regulatory compliance teamed up with the Consumer Protection personnel, and they assessed other establishments. In total, investigators visited over 120 retail establishments, including those that are registered with the state, as was mentioned earlier, as well as those that were not on the list. During the inspection and using a form, and we've included a copy of that as Exhibit 1 to your report, staff also surveyed store policies and practices. They checked for compliance with the state license and labeling standards, and they obtained photos. Some of the products, like you heard about this morning, are also some photos included in in your report. Over 20 of the merchants carried products that either copied trademark names of popular commercial candies and snacks, such as Skittles or Doritos or Golden Grahams, or they imitated brand names with variations, including Skittles with a Z, Trips Ahoy instead of Chips Ahoy, and Fruity Pebbles with a Z, similar to what was described during public comment. Some of them were labeled as medicated, and about half of them used the cartoon characters and animals that might appeal to minors. F-TAX required packaging and labeling deficiencies were also observed during field operations, such as missing batch numbers, websites, or non-functioning QR codes. About 25% of the stores that stocked edibles did not have the required hemp food establishment permit, and F-TAX was alerted accordingly. So investigators were encouraged to find that customer access to products was limited due to either age restrictions on the facility itself, because they were located behind counters, or they were in locked display cases. So follow-up by F-TAX to our referrals found that almost all of them had obtained the permits that were required, and non-compliant products were either discarded or destroyed. So based on the experience and moving forward, we request authorization to proceed with visiting other establishments to continue monitoring for compliance rates and trends, distribute available F-TAX or other educational materials, and also reach out to mobile vendors as well as wholesalers, and implement a public awareness campaign to ensure consumers understand the risks of Delta 8 products, especially to the risks of Delta Eight products, especially to children and pets. We plan to keep you apprised of our progress, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the commissioner that brought this issue forward, I would like to thank county administrator staff and county attorney's office staff for their hard work and expeditious response to this issue. I'd like to thank our partners with the state of Florida. My understanding, and I think Joe reiterated this, is that they've been incredibly helpful. I'd also like to thank Ellen Snelling for bringing the issue to the forefront and for her ongoing efforts in combating drug abuse. As you can see on Page Four of your backup material, and as Joe stated in his verbal report, staff has recommended three things: to continue monitoring the issue, to implement an educational outreach campaign aimed to educate retailers, and also an educational outreach campaign aimed at informing consumers. Staff also mentions future analysis of the effectiveness based on data collected. So with that being said, I'll move to receive the report and to adopt staff's recommendations and to direct staff to bring a report back to the board with a status update in 90 days.
Second. A motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Being none, clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. White.
Thank you. The next item is Item G3. This is another staff report from the county attorney's office to receive a report relating to gopher tortoises. And Vivian Arenas Battles from the county attorney's office will present this item.
Good afternoon. Again, it's Vivian Arenas Battles with the county attorney's office. The county attorney's office was asked to look into whether Hillsborough County has the ability to make rules protecting gopher tortoises within Hillsborough County that would provide additional protections beyond the state regulations. In researching this issue, we assembled a team consisting of staff from the county attorney's office, Development Services, the Planning Commission, and the Conservation and Environmental Lands. Specifically involved were Johanna Lundgren, Rick Schonks, Adam Gormley, Forrest Turbeville, and Melissa Zornita. And all are present online to answer any questions. We also had several calls with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission staff to confirm our findings and obtain suggestions from them as to what we could do at the county level to support their efforts. In addition, we reviewed the ordinances of other local governments. A summary of the ordinances for specifically Volusia County and the city of Cape Coral are included in the report. Our conclusion was that Hillsborough County may implement changes to the Land Development Code and other county regulations, which are deemed to further gopher tortoises, to further protection, further protect gopher tortoises, as long as these regulations do not exercise regulatory powers with regard to gopher tortoises, since the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has exclusive regulatory authority with regard to the gopher tortoises themselves. The law relating to gopher tortoises is outlined in the report. However, in a nutshell, the Florida Constitution established the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and provided it with the authority to exercise the regulatory executive powers of the state with regard to wild animal life, which includes gopher tortoises. This means that they have exclusive authority with regard to the actual regulation of the species itself, and the county is preempted from implementing regulations which regulate that species. In view of this, we then looked at what the county may be able to do to enhance protections that did not regulate the species itself. For example, the report contains several possible options regarding changes to the Land Development Code that may provide other protections or incentives. A very promising option is to establish a Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission permissible gopher tortoise recipient site on Hillsborough County ELAP lands. This is already an ongoing effort in the Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department, and Forrest Turbeville can speak to that and his efforts. All of the options considered are in the report, and staff is available to answer any questions. This concludes our report.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I see Commissioner Smith has her hand raised. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm so pleased with this report and all the work that went into it. This report came at the board's direction, and it came at this time for three reasons. One, wildlife habitat is rapidly vanishing from our county. Scrub jays are almost almost gone already, and we're losing gopher tortoises as well as burrowing owls from our county at an alarming rate. Two, the state has been relaxing the rules protecting gopher tortoises at the state level, which this board opposed, along with many other organizations. And third, Polte Homes was recently caught violating the rules, not once but twice. And just last summer, over in Ocala, this home builder was caught, large home builder, was caught cruelly slaughtering around 20 gopher tortoises and leaving behind their their little carcasses, one of them brutally chopped in two. This mass killing is horrible, and we need to do what we can to keep this from happening in our county on our watch. So I want to thank staff in the Department of Conservation and Land Management, Development Services, Natural Resources, and the several attorneys within the county attorney's office for all their very hard work in this report. And they have truly turned over every stone looking for creative ways that we can best protect gopher tortoises in our county and stay within the the state limits. It is clear that Hillsborough County staff truly cares about protecting our wildlife and is working very hard to that end. Unfortunately, some things we would like to do have been preempted by the state, but there are some things we can do. And staff has indicated that they'd need board direction at this point to proceed on those. So I would like to go over those options and make two motions, Madam Chair, guided by the staff report. In Section Four of the report, staff has listed several options in Part A and Part B. And I want to take up Part B first because it's the simplest. This is the wonderful plan to establish a gopher tortoise receiving site on ELAP land at the Baum Scrub Preserve. And this way, if tortoises must be relocated to get them out of the way of development, at least they won't be shipped off to Georgia. Many, many thanks to Forrest Turbeville and the staff of the Conservation and Environmental Management Department for working so hard with Florida Fish and Wildlife and and our attorneys, and I understand our legislative staff as well, to figure out how this can be done. And there's quite a detailed report in your backup. It can conceivably save the lives of over 100 tortoises over time, and importantly, keep them all right here in our county. So my first motion would be to simply direct staff to proceed with Option B, to establish a gopher tortoise recipient site on ELAP lands, as outlined in the staff report. And I see that Forrest Turbeville is on the call if anyone has any questions about how that would work.
Second.
Okay, so I think I would have seconded it, too. But I'm not. So Commissioner Smith made a motion, was seconded by Commissioners Cohen and Kemp.
I think it was White. Commissioner White.
White, okay. I think pretty much everybody.
It's hard to hear.
For the clerk's sake, we'll just say White, Myers, Cohen, Kemp, and Overman. Okay, so I think I think you're good. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Smith, for putting that motion forward. I did have a question for Mr. Turbeville. I saw in the report that that obviously the Baum Scrub property has been evaluated for appropriateness. Given that Hillsborough County is basically our ELAP lands, it's the largest landowner in our county, have all of the other sort of ELAP lands been considered, or was this just a first step towards identifying opportunities to negotiate with with the Fish and Wildlife group?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, this was the first step. We looked at all of our ELAP sites for their potential as a gopher tortoise recipient site. There's a lot of different criteria that FWC looks for: plant diversity, lack of tortoises in a particular area, areas that have recently been restored. So using all that criteria, we decided to come up with the Baum Scrub Preserve as kind of a pilot project. We met with FWC actually on the site back in March, and they were very encouraged by what they saw. We're going to have to have many more meetings over the summer to look at the ability of that site to carry two tortoises per acre, but we think that there's a very good chance that that's going to happen. So really, when you look at the long-term prospects for the site, we are looking at 250 acres as the boundary for the gopher tortoise recipient site. And of course, if you multiply 250 times two, that's potentially 500 gopher tortoises over the next five years. So we're very excited about that. And again, it's a pilot project. We'll look at other ELAP sites moving forward. I think that the good news is that many of our ELAP sites are comprised of natural habitat that is managed very effectively by our staff, especially with prescribed burning and exotic plant control. So on most of our preserves, especially those that have higher uplands like Sand Hill and Scrub, our gopher tortoise population is just outstanding. So those type of sites would not be considered for restocking. What FWC wants to do is just try to consider those sites where gopher tortoises historically were, but perhaps due to land disturbance or something else in the past, prior to county acquisition, those gopher tortoises are now lacking on certain areas of our ELAP sites. So again, that's one reason why we targeted the Baum Scrub Preserve, because we are actively restoring that 250-acre block that's provided as a map in your report. And we believe 100 acres are ready to go right now, and another 150 acres will be ready to go within the next two to five years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith, I see your hand up, and then I see.
No, that's I'm just keeping that up for motion two.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Kemp, did you have a comment?
I haven't heard motion two yet, but I just I just wanted to thank Commissioner Smith for her really tireless advocacy on behalf of the gopher tortoises, truly. I don't think much of us, many of us, I'll include myself, I don't know if I can speak for others, but could appreciate the kind of local habitat, how special they were to this area. And when you talk about the burrowing owls and the scrub jays and how important that is and how the loss is here, very extreme, even as compared to other places in Florida. So I appreciate the education and the advocacy. If if they could vote, I'm sure you'd have 100%. But good good job, and thank you for keep keeping up on this.
Thank you. And I too want to thank you. I personally have a nephew who actually does goes out and counts gopher tortoises as part of the surveys on properties. And that's how I got interested in in gopher tortoises, besides the fact that I'm a Terp, so Maryland Terrapin, so I kind of like them in the first place. But but I can't thank you enough for pushing this forward, for doing the research, and for the team actually working with, you know, with the state to try and figure out a way to keep these colonies as close to where they have been, because I think it's important that they're able to stay in the general area, and there's less risk of migration to other areas, and they can actually continue to stay in the region of which they, you know, have been raised since they live a long life. So with that, I'm not seeing any other hands raised to speak other than Commissioner Smith. Can we do a roll call vote on your motion, and then we'll recognize Commissioner Smith on the second one?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Okay, so motion two is a combination of several of the options laid out in Section A of potential amendments to in the staff report, of potential amendments to the comp plan and Land Development Code and ordinances. So I'm going to try to wrap it up into one motion for the sake of time. It's a combination of incentives and guardrails, a combination of carrots and sticks, if you will, basically four four things. We asked staff to bring us all possible options for us to consider, and they really, really did that. But staff is not recommending all of them, and I agree. In discussions with staff, including Greg Horadell and Adam Gormley, they are not recommending that we incentivize developers to provide additional tortoise habitat by granting them either density bonuses or waivers of impact fees. I mean, we can consider that another day or another time, but they're not recommending that, and neither am I. And after discussing those options, I agree with them. So my motion will leave those things out, but propose that we move forward with basically everything else laid out under Option A. And this motion is just to direct staff to bring these four things, four-ish things, back as possible amendments to our Land Development Code and Comp Plan and ordinances. And then we'd have the the board decide to go ahead and have workshops and have two hearings and all of that. So it's just to to give them the direction to what to bring back in this report, and this is this is the things.
Second.
Similar to Volusia, one, similar to Volusia County, we can implement requirements for applicants who wish to develop land, including tortoise habitat, to provide a borough survey by an authorized agent if they don't already have a state permit. And and I'm kind of throwing this in here as well, for such an applicant on gopher tortoise land only who doesn't have a state permit, to self-report at that time any previous violations of tortoise regulations in the state of Florida. And I think that could be, you know, subsumed under their provide a borough survey and report whether you've had any previous violations of tortoise regulations in the state of Florida. And that way, we know what we're dealing with. And and staff knows to keep an eye on these projects. Number two, bring back an LDC amendment to provide for consideration of smaller lot size requirements for development that preserves additional significant wildlife habitat that supports gopher tortoises above and beyond the minimum required by the LDC. The idea is that if a developer wants to preserve more habitat than they're required to preserve, we could consider letting them cluster the development into smaller lot sizes so they'd have the same number of houses, but concentrated in a smaller area in order to save a larger area of habitat. And and this is similar to what we just approved Lenar Homes doing in Wyoma, where they preserved a whole lot of significant wildlife habitat, but we gave them really dinky lot sizes, like 30 foot wide. And of course, Commissioner White, it would only be for the flexibility to do that, because I know in, for example, Baum, they they may or may not want to make that trade-off, and we could, you know, consider that at those in that area. Number three, bring back an LDC amendment to increase the penalty fees for unpermitted land alterations involving significant wildlife habitat. So the penalties for violations would be more of a So the penalties for violations would be more of a deterrent. And number four, work with the Planning Commission staff to bring back a comprehensive plan amendment that would encourage providing additional gopher tortoise habitat. And this could allow staff to review and balance the habitat protection along with other factors, and possibly allow a more favorable review for those that add more tortoise habitat, rather than destroying every last bit they're otherwise allowed to destroy, even if that's balanced against some other considerations, just to encourage it in our comprehensive plan and, and give us that extra weight. So I can summarize those if needed, but essentially it's to direct staff to bring back amendments to our Land Development Code, Comp Plan, and ordinances as appropriate to do those four things.
And I second it.
Okay, so Commissioner Kemp, Cohen seconded that? Okay, great. So, Clerk, are you good? That's a lot, a lot of items, but I think I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it. Commissioner White, your hands raised.
Thank you. I will be, of course, voting in favor of the, the motion on the floor. I think that, that clustering lots with smaller lot sizes makes a lot of sense inside the urban service area, and then within those unique areas like the WVR2 areas, perhaps some of the RP2 areas. But I tell you, outside the urban service area, where we don't currently have entitlements, major entitlements, that is, in terms of density, and we really have a blank canvas, I think for a host of reasons, and I'm going to be gone in a few months, but I hope you'll all consider that for a host of reasons, we should preserve a larger lot size development pattern for folks that wish to live that lifestyle. You take someone with a five-acre parcel, you know, they may have several gopher tortoises on their property, and those tortoises have plenty of room to burrow and live in a natural habitat. And sometimes, oftentimes, I'll say, private property owners are the best stewards of our resources, like our wildlife resources. I live on a unique property in the suburbs inside the urban service area. It's only an acre and a half in size, and I have at least one gopher tortoise on my property. And I love it when it's out and about. I mean, it's just great to admire wildlife like that. So I'll implore you all to consider that, that's just one of the many reasons that it would make sense to, you know, to work with the large landowners out there as we're making policy and try to preserve a, a larger lotting pattern, particularly in eastern Hillsborough County. But, but where the comprehensive plan is already going to drive more density and those entitlements exist, I agree, that's the best way to go about it.
I don't see any other hands raised, so with that, we have a motion for Commissioner Smith and multiple seconds. Please, Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you very much. And I, I want to thank all the staff so far. These reports that have come back have been big monster requests, and, and you guys are doing a great job of delivering, and the next one's just as big. So with that, Ms. Wise?
I was just saying that, just like the next one. Item G4, this is a report, actually, the board had various requests on housing ownership and ordinances and rent increases, and the county attorney's office put it into one very comprehensive report. So with that, we'll turn it over to Nancy Takamori with the County Attorney's Office to take us through G4.
Good afternoon, Nancy Takamori, County Attorney's Office. This item is a staff report which combines at least two issues that the board asked the County Attorney's Office to research. First is the county's ability to regulate the corporate owners of single-family homes to provide additional protections to tenants. And second, regarding ordinances recently adopted in other Florida jurisdictions requiring landlords to provide notice to tenants of certain rent increases. And we did combine those issues into one report because both relate to access to safe, decent, and affordable housing. Regarding the large-scale corporate ownership of single-family rental homes, as our report points out, in Hillsborough County, this involves large investor-backed corporate entities, often from out of state, buying existing single-family homes and renting them out, but also these entities building new subdivisions of entirely built-to-rent single-family housing. Now, there's been reporting, some of which, which is referenced in our report, that having a large corporate landlord can further tilt the balance of power in the landlord-tenant relationship in favor of the landlord, and this can create circumstances where the landlord is empowered to do things like provide in the lease for additional fees and additional maintenance responsibilities that you might not previously have seen in the typical single-family rental. Also, certainly, having large-scale cash buyers of existing housing can make the housing market more competitive and expensive for individual homebuyers who need financing to purchase a home. So our report looked at fair housing issues, land use regulations, property maintenance, and code enforcement issues related to corporate ownership of single-family rentals. I'm not going to go over everything in the report, but ultimately, we did not find examples of local governments that have successfully found a way to regulate this particular segment of the market in any of these areas to provide additional tenant protections. But one step that some local governments are taking for the benefit of tenants is the second area that you asked us to research, and that's an ordinance requiring landlords to provide notice to tenants before raising rental rates. Tampa, Miami-Dade, and Broward have adopted these ordinances. They require at least a 60-day notice prior to raising rent under certain leases by more than 5%. And you'll find those ordinances attached to the report. So finally, and this relates to a third issue that was brought up by Commissioner Overman at the end of the last board meeting, these ordinances that are attached to your report that require notice of rent increases also do something else. They impose additional notice requirements on the termination of certain tenancies. For instance, Tampa's ordinance requires that for tenancies without a specific duration with month-to-month rent, rent, 30 days' notice must be given by either the landlord or the tenant prior to termination of the lease. So at your direction, we could certainly bring back an ordinance for your review, similar to Tampa's, that would require a 60-day notice of rent increase and also a 30-day notice of termination of month-to-month tenancies. So thank you. I'm available for questions or to provide more detail.
Thank you very, very much for bringing that back. The research was extensive, and there were actually several things that I'd like to, to address based on your findings. You know, we are in a housing crisis, and prices are skyrocketing, and tenants have been left with little to no time, under our current scenario, to find an affordable alternative place to live. Basically, they're, they're faced with homelessness with such short notice right now, given the lack of inventory. Assuming we're able to actually invest in, in additional units, whether they be market rate or affordable rate, it's going to be critically important that we address this period that we are in, but also recognize that oftentimes, additional inventory takes multiple years to accomplish. And doing nothing for the next couple of, three years is not, in my opinion, an option. So I do appreciate you looking at the Miami-Dade County and Broward County ordinances that were successfully passed to model our proposed ordinance. And so with that, I'd like to pass the gavel to Commissioner Smith, so that I could actually make a motion based on your report. I think there's an opportunity for us, especially since we are growing faster in not only property values, but in rents than anywhere else in the state. We're competing with Miami-Dade and Broward, and they have actually adopted these ordinances or terms very similar to what I'm going to ask to bring back. But I think it's really important, given the lack of inventory that we have, that we do something now. So I move to request that the staff prepare an ordinance for consideration by the board to increase the notification period for month-to-month residential leases to 30 days, which are currently, I believe, is at 15, but let's do 30 days at the end of the period, and then providing for a requirement that landlords provide 60 days prior written notice of a rental increase for residential leases, as well as a notice, a 60-day notice of a, of nonrenewal.
Second?
Because that's, that's been sort of the issue. Folks are not having enough time to know whether or not they need to find somewhere else to live, and we don't have, but as of the last data I have, about 0.7% of a month's worth of inventory out there, so it takes longer than a month or so to find a place. And the tenants get an opportunity to know that they're not, they're going to be able to renew their lease, as well as be able to adjust to a rental increase that will come within 60 days. Commissioner, I have a second motion that I'd like to do, but...
Okay, and we've got a motion and a second, and I've lost the hand raising, but Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. We're all, pull it back.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Overman, for being just totally on top of this issue and following it very closely, doing everything you can in this time of crisis. I think the staff did a very good job of reporting back and finding everything, of which, you know, most of what we can possibly do, besides try to give out resources to people that are in trouble from, from our COVID funds and other resources of the county, most of, most of that is prohibited by the state, and we're, we cannot do that. But these are obviously being done in other communities. I think it's the, the least, apparently the least and the most we can do. And I think it's really important that we do move forward with every single measure possible to give people at least some notice of what they're facing. I think it, it could be helpful. So I appreciate that, that there was this very thorough look at this, and, you know, we just need to do what is in our power to do.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I can't see you, Commissioner Overman, but I can see everybody else in here for, for the hand raising, and I don't see any other hands ra, oh, sorry, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just one quick question. Who would monitor this? Would it be the affordable housing? Who would monitor the, we're talking about putting a 60-day, the landlord giving a 60-day notice and a 30 days, but then someone has to monitor this, so who would this be? So you have a check and balance in place.
Commissioner Nancy Takamori. I think it would be enforced by the Code Enforcement Department as certain portions of the Tenants Bill of Rights ordinance are, and it wouldn't necessarily be monitored, but as most of code enforcement is, it'd be on a complaint basis. So as complaints from tenants arise, code enforcement would investigate for violations of the ordinance if you adopt one.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I've got the hands back in front of me, but I see no further discussion. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Let's take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized again.
Thank you so very much. One of the things that I've discovered in addressing some properties that we have in Hillsborough County, specifically multifamily properties, is an issue associated with how we address safe housing and safe housing standards. There are standards that establish what is considered safe housing, and it falls under our Consumer Services and Code Enforcement and other areas. But what is not addressed in many circumstances is an issue associated when mold is found within a residential property, and the landlord's responsibility to take care of that mold, given that the Environmental Protection Commission has indicated that it could present health hazards. But there are no standards currently at the federal level that dictate what happens when mold is reported by a tenant to a landlord. So I'd like to ask their staff to do a little research, but bring back a proposed safe housing standard that establishes best practices when addressing mold inside of a residential unit or home, with required actions to address the mitigation process, as required by a certified mold inspector and/or remediator. And that, that's my motion. The, the issue I see with this is there are standards for remote, for establishing being a mold inspector, and there is a certification process for being an inspector, and there's a certification process and process established for mold remediation. However, there is no requirement that when mold is found within a residence and it's, that there is a certain best practice that is actually adopted by that landlord in order to address potentially unsafe housing arrangements. And that's why I'd like to ask the staff to bring back either an ordinance or, well, yeah, an ordinance to address those particular issues.
I'll, I'll second, if I...
So, got a motion two from Commissioner Overman, and a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll just say this, I'll, I'll second it and, and support it for further investigations we go forward. I can totally imagine, honestly, that a lot of it is probably preempted in, in other ways, but I, I don't know. I don't know if, if there's, Ms. Takamori would like to, has any thoughts or even knew that this portion was going to be presented, but I, I would second it to learn more and have something come back and, and find out if we, you know, what we would be getting into here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Kemp. I'm happy to support it for the, just to take it a step further, but, you know, now we're getting into the business of legislating best practices for ameliorating residential mold, and I, I think, I think we need to tread lightly and make sure that we don't overreach and, and perhaps start creating problems in, in, that, that, in search of solutions, solutions in search of problems, or problems in searching, in search of solutions.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to ask at the appropriate time that the motion be repeated.
Right. And this is the appropriate time. Commissioner Overman, would you please repeat the motion?
Sure, sure. Okay. So my second motion is to ask staff to come back with an ordinance identifying, I'll make it more clear, so, because let me, let me read the sentence that is in the report, and then I'll rephrase the motion. In the report, it said, "In instances where mold growth is visible, the county does not have the ability to cite the owners of such properties in the unincorporated area for violation of the county's property maintenance standards." So the ordinance that I'm asking to come back is to establish the process of addressing mold inside of residential units with, with required actions to address the mitigation process required by a certified mold inspector and remediators. And that's my motion.
Thank you. And, and so, that raises a question, Commissioner White, you still have, okay, that raises a question for me, maybe from the county attorney, Ms. Takamori, is the reason, the sentence that she read, that, that the county does not have the ability to cite these mold violations, is, is the reason being that we're preempted? Is the, is the reason being because there's other agencies that are supposed to manage that, or, or is that just a big gap?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't know at this time if it is a preemption issue. It's not something I looked at. I do think that we need to explore a little bit more as well, code enforcement's authority. I have spoke to Joe Gross about this issue, and my understanding was a little bit different than what the, the chair stated. And I understood that code enforcement could cite for visible mold... mold, but not, and that would be a violation of the Property Maintenance Code, but not for mold that was in the air and was evidenced by some kind of report from somebody with expertise. So certainly, it's not something that we have sufficiently researched at that time, but we can do so in response to your motion.
Thank you. And that makes it clear for me. Commissioner Overman, thank you very much. It seems like this is a point that would be good for us to all understand, especially with the complaints we're getting, with pictures showing mold in some of these terrible places, for us to at least have an understanding of who's regulating this locally, who, where the complaints can go, and if there is still a gap, how we might address that with a county ordinance if we can. So with that, I'm happy to support that, to figure it out. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say for the record that the devil's going to be in the details for me, but I'm completely supportive of seeing a draft of an ordinance, see where we land in terms of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, and just one last comment on this, for me at least. I mean, I, before we start holding landlords responsible for mold in units, I would think you have to determine who's responsible for having caused it. In other words, I can see circumstances where the tenant is responsible for causing the mold, and then I'm not, I just think that there's a lot we need to investigate about this in order to understand how to properly hold the responsible parties to account.
Yes, please.
Yes, just very briefly, I think that, I think Nancy's probably correct, that it would be best to kind of research this in a little bit more depth. It was touched on briefly, but it wasn't the main focus of the report, and so certainly if there's a viable way to bring back an ordinance, we can do that, but it may have to be a report providing further information.
Thank you. All right, and Commissioner Overman, you're good with?
I am. To address Commissioner Cohen's concern, I do, I do recognize that deciding how it happened is going to be oftentimes difficult, but what we, what I've experienced over the last few years dealing with complaints in this area has been that it's been a longstanding lack of a proper maintenance of the property, and that then causes a mold problem. And it takes a significant, if we have standards for what's considered mold inspections, and we have standards for considered what mold remediation means and should be done, I think that's an important element that needs to be incorporated with whatever ordinance we consider going forward. So thank you very much for the questions, and I look forward to seeing the staff bringing us back something we can work with that we can adopt within Hillsborough County.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, and I made the original second and said I wanted to do with more investigation, and what the motion, from what I understand, is bringing back an ordinance, but what Ms. Beck said was, and I think that that would be a better place to go with this, is kind of bring back a report so we can, because everybody's asking a lot of questions about who, what, where, why, with regards to this and what we could do. And so I think if, Commissioner Overman, you might, if, I don't know, I made the original second, but I'd like to ask if maybe the, or start, we could start this with a report back to kind of explore responsibility, possibilities in this area, and look at that first before we even go to drafting an ordinance.
Commissioner Overman, I'm seeing a lot of head shaking here. Do you want to revise your motion for a first step?
I am willing to do that, because at the end of the day, I think it's critically important that we address this issue. So if revising the motion, let me see if I can figure out how to restate it once again, is to ask staff to bring back a best-case scenario for addressing issues associated with mold within residential properties that, where there's a landlord and tenant involved, and to determine what best actions could be adopted via ordinance to address the mitigation process required by a certified mold inspector and the remediations. And I believe Mr. Gross can assist us with some of those areas, as well as many other professionals within our staff.
And that has my second, and...
Okay, great.
Great, great. Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Let's take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Commissioner Overman, the gavel is yours.
Excellent. Well, I only have left future discussions, and I only have one. Commissioner Kemp, your hands raised.
It's still up.
Okay.
It keeps, that screen keeps going down, so I just, okay.
Are there any future discussion items for consideration by the rest of the board members before I bring mine forward? Hearing none. I'd like to address something I've brought to the board's attention in the past, and we heard from Vice Commander Damon recently regarding the issue associated with military housing and the lack of inventory and challenges that they are facing. So, and I'd like to ask for, to bring back for future consideration, a staff, a staff effort. In light of the dire lack of viable housing for junior airmen, junior servicemen and women that currently serve at McHale Air Force Base, I'd like to direct staff to review our portfolio of county-owned properties to determine which ones are best suited to create housing options for members of our military when they are assigned to McHale. I would like to ask staff to bring back this report as soon as possible, but no later than 90 days from today. At a minimum, the report should identify the number and type of housing units that could be placed on each site. The report should also note the approximate distance to major transportation facilities and bus routes, recreation opportunities, and basic retail, i.e. drugstores, grocery stores, and restaurants, so that it would be convenient for those individuals that are serving our country. Finally, the significant hurdle to the development of military housing should be identified for each site listed in the report. I've been working with, well, let me finish. In addition, I would like to staff to schedule a presentation of the upcoming Veterans Park Master Plan update as soon as it's completed. My understanding is that the plan is updated to include a housing component for veterans, and this, that this village concept will be located near our existing park. So that will be an interesting concept, and I think it'll address some of our concerns for our veterans, but we have additional concerns for our active junior servicemen and women that are told to be here. And as we heard from Colonel Damon, having an hour's commute to the base should they need to get planes in the air is a risk that we need to address. So I think with that, if we were able to bring that back, it doesn't necessarily mean it has the same filter of surplus lands that affordable housing has. There is an affordable housing base allowance that is available for servicemen and women that are stationed at McHale now and in the future. There's also a travel allowance that allows them to use their van pool to address their point-to-point transit needs that is not available to, you know, all citizens in a large way. So the filter of identifying lands is a little bit different than the affordable housing filter, and that's why I'm asking specifically for this report. And that's all I had. Are there any other items before we adjourn? Seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.